Morning.
Okay.
We're in that 28E with the Central Iowa Juvenile Detention. We are researching a little more. He talked to Lynn in Johnson County. And then we also would like to see their fee schedule before he approves that 28E.
Okay, so you want to table that then?
Yep, yep, until we get further information. That's one of those we've been asking for two years and we haven't seen the contract.
Okay.
So that's why I asked for you to look it over too.
Well, gentlemen, we need to table it, take it off before or table it when we get to it.
I'll remove, we remove it from the agenda.
Do I have a second?
I have a second, Ted.
All right, call for a vote to remove number 14 entering the revised 28E for Central Iowa Juvenile Detention.
Tippett, aye.
Seaman, aye.
Vols, aye.
Remove from the agenda. Okay, now back to the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that motion.
Call for a vote. Seaman, aye.
Tippett, aye.
Vols, aye.
We have an agenda. The minutes.
I have looked at the minutes.
What?
Yep.
Did you find something?
Yep. Uh, it started at nine o'clock immediately.
Oh, yep, Bruce did tell me that. I emailed it too, so I have a fix on my end, sorry.
No problem.
The last one, we had the nine thirty.
Then I would approve, we, uh, I might make a motion to approve the minutes.
A second.
All right, call for a vote on that.
Tippett, aye.
Seaman, aye.
Vols, aye.
Claims.
I was testing you.
I caught it.
I did have a chance to review the claims. I didn't see anything that jumped out.
Um, one question I had on the, uh, this is the expense approval register, is that what we're looking at?
Correct.
Um, the software comes out as a general basic, is that?
Was that to Tyler Technology one?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, that all comes out?
Well, some of it we pay out of lost.
Okay.
If it's oh, oh, four, oh, that's local option sales tax. But some of those normal contracts, we just upgraded to the time and attendance, so we just had to pay a portion.
That's the only question that I had, so.
Good. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All right, call for a vote on the claims.
Tippett, aye.
Seaman, aye.
Vols, aye.
And I did not see any ARPA claims?
No, I just kind of put it on there just in case.
That's fine. Karen, I guess we should have started with you right away.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
I am Karen Kurt. I am the Executive Director of the East Central Iowa Council of Governments.
Thank you.
And speaking of 28E agreements, we were formed by a 28E agreement. And, uh, by Benton County as well as Iowa, Jones, Washington, Johnson, and Lynn Counties. And, uh, we do four primary things with a kicker. One is all, all different types of planning. So we do, um, what, we would do, uh, transit planning, transportation planning, comprehensive plans for cities, watershed planning, economic development planning. Uh, most of the organi, most of the employees that work for us are planners by education. But the other, uh, second probably biggest thing that we do is try and leverage state and federal resources for our region. And a third thing is just technical services. If there's a skill set that we have and we can see that a county or city needs it, we will try and step in and assist with that. And then lastly is promoting regional collaboration. And then the kicker on all of that is if there's a disaster, as there was here with the deratio, then we kind of kick into high gear with recovery. We don't clear trees or anything like that. We're kind of the second wave of recovery once federal funds become available. And so I know you're gonna see us come up in your budget process. So I wanted you to know a little bit about kind of what we've done in Benton County. Um, so that's why you have this Benton County at a glance and it shows the amount that you actually contribute to our organization. Most of, uh, the organization is actually funded by the work that we do, but we have a small assessment, uh, that each county pays that contributes as well. We use that as a match for grants as well as just to help stand the organization up. Um, and so that was seventeen thousand nine hundred and two dollars. And then on the front, you can see the projects that we did in Benton County as well as on the back, all of the grants that we administered on behalf of the, um, uh, the county or communities within the county. And so you can see it was a pretty good return on investment, uh, for the amount contributed in terms of the amount of resources we were able to bring back, uh, back to your, your communities in the, the area. Uh, it's, this is not a perfect number because, um, often grants that we manage will extend over multiple years. But, but it gives you a sense of the impact. Yeah, and that's what I just wanted to share for you, just so you knew a little bit about what we were up to. We also have our annual report there, so you can see all of the projects that we've done throughout the region. And, um, we're here and happy to serve. And I am also kind of a segue into the next set of speakers because one of the things that we do actually is help support watersheds within our region. And I think, uh, they're up next, so. Anything I can answer or any questions you might have about us?
I'm on your board, so.
Yeah, I know you're well informed, crazy.
Do you guys have any questions?
Yeah.
I've, I've worked with EC CAGA quite a few times.
Good, good.
For the city of Norman, and, uh, we've always been impressed.
Wonderful, that's what we, that's what we like to hear, so.
Always nice.
Thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
Okay, well, we're gonna continue with the topic of 28E agreements. Um, so my name's Mary Beth Stevenson and I work for the City of Cedar Rapids. And I'm the Chair of the Watershed Management Authority for the Middle Cedar. And so again, similar to Karen, since you guys will be kind of hearing from us through your budget process, we just thought it would be a great idea to stop by, give you some information on what we do, and answer any questions you might have. I'll let you introduce yourself to Alyssa.
Yeah, I'm Alyssa Comer, um, fairly new at EC CAG, but I am working alongside Mary Beth with, um, three watershed management authorities. And Middle Cedar, um, is what we're here to talk about today, because that's in fact the county, but.
Yeah, so, um, I'll handle the presentation since Alyssa's very new. Um, and I've been part of the WMA since it got started back in 2015, um, pretty much along with Tracy too, I think, right? Um, great, so, um, we just have a couple of quick slides for you today. Um, basically just wanted to kind of review what a watershed management authority is. Um, and then talk a little bit about some of our accomplishments in the Middle Cedar over the past ten years or so, um, and what we're looking forward to in the future. So, um, a watershed management authority, it, it sounds very official, um, but it's, it's a 28E agreement, an intergovernmental cooperative agreement between cities, counties, and soil and water conservation districts. Um, so we are linking together in order to address watershed management issues like flooding and water quality and, um, working with different stakeholders, including agriculture, to look for cooperative solutions on the ground. Um, so our role as a WMA really includes quite a few things, uh, grant writing and grant management, and then, um, watershed planning, education, um, things of that nature. So really just kind of a hub for information exchange and hopefully to get a watershed coordinator on the ground, which we'll talk about here in a little bit. So, um, Iowa's watershed management authorities, um, the WMAs were authorized, um, by legislation that was passed back in 2017, 2010, and that was in direct response to the catastrophic 2008 floods. So I'm sure many of you in the room today were impacted in some way by that, um, life-changing event. Um, and then, so in 2010, the legislature authorized watershed management authorities to be formed. Uh, we started off with just six WMAs in the state of Iowa, but it became a very, um, just, it caught on. It was really popular, a good way for cities, counties, and soil and water conservation districts to sit down across the table from one another and talk about common solutions. So yeah, I, I won't dive too much into this, um, so you can go ahead onto the next slide here. Um, just wanted to talk a little bit about the Middle Cedar WMA. So our watershed is very, very large. Um, it kind of starts, you can see here the map. Um, it covers quite a lot of ground. Um, Benton County, uh, is one of the bigger kind of territories within the watershed. Um, and so, you know, by nature of that, we, we are doing quite a bit of work in the Benton County region, or we have in the past. Um, Lynn County is a big part of it as well, Black Hawk and Grundy Counties, um, those are all pretty much, pretty involved in the WMA to date. Um, we have about, we have twenty-six entities who have signed on to that intergovernmental cooperative agreement. Um, so we do have a pretty strong support in the watershed. Now, there are more communities, uh, that could be part of the WMA if they chose to, and we're gonna be working on some outreach to communities over the next couple of years. So we've gotten a lot done since we formed. Um, back in 2015, very shortly after the group formed, um, we were awarded, um, eleven million dollars um, for the Iowa Watershed Approach Project. Um, part of that money went towards the Iowa Flood Center for a lot of research, um, on different watershed management practices. Um, but I believe eight million came to the WMA itself. So with that money, um, we hired a watershed coordinator. Benton County was the lead entity on that, so thank you for the work that you did there. Um, and the watershed coordinator was very successful in selling projects to landowners. What Alyssa is showing here is just some examples of the completed projects in the area. Um, we've also provided you with a, a little, um, a gentleman over here is looking at it right now, a guide to our watershed management plan, which is a pretty thick document, um, which we can make available to you guys if you want it. There may be a hard copy here already, um, in-house. And then the other thing is just kind of a, um, a booklet about all of our successes across the Middle Cedar watershed, all that we can accomplish when we work together. So, yep, we can go ahead. So yeah, just kind of looking forward. Um, so in 2020, the Iowa Watershed Approach Project wrapped up. Um, the watershed coordinator had left shortly before the project ended, just a better job opportunity opened up for him. Um, but we really have been feeling the loss of our watershed coordinator. We were able to accomplish so much having somebody on staff. So we are looking at different funding opportunities right now to, to kind of get that project coordinator position back and on, on staff. Um, this time around, not necessarily asking Benton County to serve as the hiring entity for that. Um, City of Cedar Rapids would be willing to serve as the hiring entity. We're also looking around to other opportunities also. Um, but we do have an opportunity right now through EPA. Um, we're looking at, uh, just over a million dollars in financial request. Um, that money would go towards a watershed coordinator. It would go towards more on-the-ground watershed projects. And it would also go towards, um, a lot of research and monitoring on watershed projects and monitoring effectiveness of the projects. So, but the main thing for us is getting that watershed coordinator. Um, and that's part of the reason we wanted to come today, um, is to just, you know, make you aware of everything that we're planning so that when our financial request does come through on your agenda, you have a little bit of background of what we're requesting. Um, I believe we are requesting five thousand dollars this time around. So, um, really, uh, I don't have numbers for you as far as ROI, but there really is a big significant return on investment when you do inv, uh, when you do contribute to the WMA. So that's all that we have for you this morning, but we'd be happy to answer any questions. Um, Tracy does regularly come to our meetings, the quarterly WMA meetings that we have. But anybody else is welcome to attend. They are public meetings. We try to add in some educational content to each meeting. Um, and we would just love to have you guys, you know, really involved and connected. So with that, we will take any questions you might have.
We haven't been participating for two years now, right?
Correct.
Since we were the fiscal agent.
Lately, I have been attending on Zoom, I do it on Zoom now.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah, so it's been great to have you, um, and definitely hope to keep that connection going. Um, we do ask the supervisors to have a formal representative. So Tracy, I don't know if that will continue to be you, or if, you know, either of the other supervisors would be interested. Um, but it is really important to have, have you guys here, um, part of the group. It, it definitely is, is great for our organization, so. Yeah, all right. With that, I will let you guys get back to it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary Beth.
Yeah, you bet.
And I'm gonna take off. I don't mean to be disruptive, just maybe grab my things. I'm happy to hear Lynn County wants to be the fiscal agent.
Yes.
That was the learning for my, when I first started, yeah.
It was a complicated, but CDBG funds are not easy to work with, so.
It taught me a lot.
Yeah, we kind of threw you in with the shark. All right, take care, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Melody.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is the, the hot seat here. I'll be speaking this morning on behalf of Riverview Center in addition to, um, some friends of mine. Um, I'm Melody. I am the Iowa Program Director at Riverview Center. And just a brief overview of what we do is, uh, we provide both immediate crisis support to folks impacted by sexual abuse as well as long-term support, um, to survivors of sexual abuse. So that might mean if somebody presents to the Sheriff's Department to do an initial report with Laura, for example, and they would like an advocate, we're dispatched on scene. If someone goes to Virginia Gay to get a kit collected, we're also dispatched on scene to provide support. And then in addition to that, um, twenty-four seven, three sixty-five availability. We do long-term, um, support in terms of counseling, in terms of connecting folks with their basic needs being met. So food, shelter, clothing, all of those things as well. And everything is completely free to folks. We're the only agency in the area doing this work. And so the funding that we're asking from you all is to help make our advocates like Sotarica mobile consistently because transportation is a huge barrier and we don't want to expect folks living in Benton or anywhere in Benton County to be expected to travel somewhere to get services so that they can be working towards a, a path of healing and being able to move forward with their life. Because sexual abuse is not just a one-time, isolated horrible event. It really impacts folks and their families for a long time. Um, and then in addition to that, we also provide our hospitals with clothing. So if somebody presents, gets that kit collected, they give their clothing up as part of evidence, we want them to, to leave in dignity, and so we provide hospital clothing so that they don't have to leave in scrubs, especially in cold weather like this, it's, you know, not, not appropriate to leave in paper-thin scrubs. So that's an overview of what we do. Um, and then on, I'll let Sotarica kind of talk a little bit about the work she does directly with clients.
Yeah, um, so outside of Metawive C, which looks like going to the hospital in case whoever wants to, um, present that they've been subject assaulted, um, I am in Benton, at least try to be, I'm here, I'm available whenever, um, twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, however, I'm trying, try to be physically here three times a week. Um, just doing outreach work, going places, um, presenting, uh, the work that we do and just explaining. Um, probably last Thursday, I was here for about five hours. I had a survivor call me, um, just because she didn't want me to be there with her. Um, she was afraid to leave her house and I was just there for support for her. Um, and that's what it looks like just to be there for survivors and our clients.
And survivors are, um, you know, supported by all of our team members from our Cedar Rapids office, but Sotarica is also our rural advocate, so she really focuses in on Benton County and Jones County specifically. Um, and we also have a rural coordinator who's also really, um, targeting our rural areas to not only ensure people know about services, but also to provide educational opportunities. So we also have collaborated with, with, you know, our Sheriff's Department in providing education so folks know how to be safe on the internet, what things to watch out for, and things like that as well. So.
Did you want to?
No, I'm good. Um, on behalf of like, when I work in cases, these ladies are really beneficial for me because it just doesn't stop when I first see the victim come in. It has to carry on all the way through trial, which could take a couple of years down the road. And at time, by that point, I'm usually buried under more cases. So without these ladies' assistance and help, getting the victims through all the way to trial, which can be a scary thing and gives them time to, you know, you can sit there and think over and over what-ifs and what-ifs, and these ladies really do respond and really do assist these victims. So they are a crucial key point from the beginning to the end. And I really do appreciate their work in the cases. Are there any questions that any of you have that we can answer at the moment?
No. Don't have anything.
Thank you for your time and allowing us to make this request.
Okay, thank you.
You guys have their official request, right?
I, yeah, I didn't, oh.
Nope, that's fine.
But it is here.
We still do that 28E with the SART team too, right?
Do what?
The SART team, S-A-R-T.
Or a left one.
No, I mean, they're separate from that. We still do that, correct?
Um.
Just so I know, budget-wise.
I'm thinking the one lady left.
There's like, I don't know how many counties were in that one.
No, I saw it the other day.
I think Delaware was the fiscal agent for that one.
Yes. What was her request? How much was it? Oh, I'm looking for it.
Yeah.
Sounds no.
In the last few years, we did not pay.
That is true.
But she's always, always asking.
They've always come in and asked, and you guys, because of that S-A-R-T agreement we're in, you decided we didn't need their service, but I think Laura.
We got, uh, positive feedback from the Sheriff's Office on this.
Okay. Uh, like I said, it's only a thousand, so.
It sounds like they do a lot for that.
I was thinking there, it was a lot higher years back.
I think it was five grand maybe years ago when we weren't paying it, but we haven't paid for a few years.
Okay. Kind of like the WMA.
Right.
So there is a...
And that reduced, that was eight thousand last year.
Yeah.
There's an actual budget request here. Is that an actionable item?
Well, at this time.
Not yet, not yet.
If you see at the bottom of those forms, I started to do a few years back, that when you guys do budget work.
Uh-huh.
Because most of these entities want a yes or no so they can plan their budgets. So then when we make action, then I make you guys sign a date that and send it to them.
Okay.
Oh, we have a paper trail.
Yep. Five minutes yet, so.
Can I question something on budget?
Why, sure.
So talking with Dean, we really do need to real, understand who's gonna pay that maintenance agreement for the tower site with either the E-911 Board or the county. They are claiming that it should be the county since you guys signed those contracts.
I do know from the E-911 budget of the past, I don't think there's that much money there.
I mean, they, they're their own levying authority. They could levy for it. But right now, we have to take RFPs for the Hazard Mitigation Plan as well, so that's a cost issue. We have to update that every five years.
And I suppose you can't tell me how much to get in on the phone, nine-one-one dollar or phone.
Surcharges?
Yeah.
They could run a revenue report to estimate that. I don't think it's that amount that you're hoping for.
The, the landline charge is going down.
Mm-hmm.
The phone, the cellphone one seems to have kind of leveled out.
Mm-hmm, sometimes there's zero, actually. We can get some of them. It'll be quarterly sentimental.
Okay.
Because Dean needs to know as well, because they have to do their budget hearing before we do.
That's you, Dave, at nine-one-one budget hearing. He will help, yeah.
Because usually that one in the EMA has to be done at the end of February, where we have till April. Do you want me to run you a revenue report off of the forty-time fund?
Would I handle it?
No, that's just the three-year expense report I should.
Okay. Yeah, just for curiosity. I'm thinking it was still a hundred and some thousand they get a year in the dollar surcharge, but I'm not bothered yet.
I think you're in ballpark.
But I just don't think it's gonna cover that, because I think it's...
And the problem with that is that the contract, I haven't revisited that. How much the yearly payment is for the service agreement for the towers. I don't believe it was a hundred and thirty or a hundred and forty, but then they had a hundred and stuff.
There was some options.
Added in there that would bump it up to close to two hundred thousand.
Wasn't that if we were gonna share equipment with other counties too, or something in there?
Well, they wondered us since we got the empty building down here to be the warehouse.
And then that equipment will sit there maybe ten years and then it becomes obsolete, but we still pay for that, right?
Correct.
Well, we paid for it.
Yeah, I think you're probably locked in since you signed that. I'll do last year's, so I can look at a full year.
I don't think it's quite right to burden the Sheriff's Department, checking you guys with it.
I think that would almost be a new...
You know what I mean? Because the fire department, they benefit, secondary roads benefit from it. They're on their own radios.
But come out of the Sheriff's Budget, we'd have to increase it, well, Haley'd have to build a line item.
Well, we have Department ninety-nine as well, because to me, that's not just specific to the sheriff. You're covering the whole county. So I would think it would go under Department ninety-nine.
I agree.
Even though it's under that same service area for public safety, but it would come out of a different bucket. Looks like total in E-911 revenue, that's what taxes, they got two hundred and sixty-nine thousand last year. You just want the surcharge one?
Yes.
So we have the payments, the cell, cellphone payments, yeah, it's all broken down. Fifty-six, four ninety-two, forty-seven with the surcharge.
That's way down.
Yeah.
That's just for the landline, though, right? Because the cellphones are fifty cents a piece, I think.
Yeah, the cellphone, we have a hundred and eighty-five thousand.
There you go.
And there's interest on that fund, but yeah, the surcharge itself, um, doesn't cover that.
Might be something we have to look at splitting with them.
I think Department ninety-nine, I think just figured in there, in my opinion now. Because like I said, the schools even got radios now. They got radios, versus responders, you know, fire department, ambulance, secondary roads. It ain't, like I said, it still ain't fair for the Sheriff's Department to hook the whole bill when it's being shared.
Right.
The whole system.
And you're not gonna ask the cities and those other entities to pay back for that?
No, no. I think it's Department ninety-nine.
Okay, and are you gonna talk with them to make sure we know the right amount?
Yeah, I'll get to Congress. I mean, it's only three hundred and some pages.
Yeah. Well, and I thought that, that one part was undecided, so.
Okay, well, I figured we were gonna have a meeting last Thursday and it did not happen, so I don't know what's going on again.
But that helps me know where to put it, so, for now.
No meeting.
That was gone. We have a...
I can email everybody that contract if they all want to look at it. It's big.
That three hundred page it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
With pictures.
Yeah.
Drawings, excuse me.
All right, let's get back on course here. It's like Carrie. It's like Carrie.
This is my first time.
Good.
Yeah, so.
Come up here.
Come on up, okay.
Did you want to do a PowerPoint, or you're just going to speak?
No, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna read.
That's fine.
And then grab my pen in case you guys have anything to read. Good morning. It's freezing out. I have a new staff member that moved here from New Mexico.
Oh boy.
And she, like, texted and she's like, so if it's a late, like, start for schools, do we have a late start for work? And I'm like, oh, you're in Iowa now. We go. We go to work when it's cold. So, I'm Carrie Chase. I'm the Vice President of Community Impact at United Way v. Central Iowa. Usually you have a representative of the volunteer center here. Roxanne retired. And so we are searching for a new member there, so I get to fill in. So I kind of looked at what she presented last year and just wanted to give you some wins, some changes, and kind of what's on our horizon for this year, if that sounds okay? So wins for this year. One of the big things that you all support is our transportation program for individuals who need access. So, we love it because it leverages volunteers and spends volunteer time to be able to transport people to medical appointments. The primary is individuals who are fifty-five and plus. However, we have some flexibility on that, and that could be in county, it can be out of county. We've seen story after story where these relationships really matter, not just to the volunteer, but to the client as well. So, just a quick math, last year, fiscal year, our volunteers provided over twenty thousand miles. It was actually twenty thousand seven hundred fifty-four miles of service, which is almost a trip around the world, if you think about it. So that's a lot. Over a thousand volunteer hours, which is about forty-five days. And right now, we have, we go between fifty or sixty different patrons that we're able to take out in the community. Support also goes through a project group, and so they do a lot of things. Again, it's engaging, a lot of our aging population. It's like meaningful, building relationships, having that community contact. But they've done over a hundred, close to a hundred and fifty lab quilts, again, three hundred heart and breast cancer pillows to local treatment centers. We also did our Thanksgiving food boxes this year, and we did the tree of sharing. And those go to, we coordinate with local school districts, and then we also coordinate with different care facilities for that too. And I know I've dropped off more than my share of the pillows around, so that's good. So big changes this year. Roxanne retired, like I had stated. We still have two part-time staff, because it does take a person to, at least on a part-time basis, to run the transportation program, be able to take the calls, match them through all the things. And then we, we also, we had an office in Vinton, and we engaged after, after Roxanne retired, we engaged our advisory committee again to kind of make some decisions. And they really felt like there was not a lot of gaps to fill in Vinton. And so we decided to not have a bricks and mortar place. We still have office space in Bell Plain. And then what we're hoping to do is then, based on our advisory councils, they would like us to move into some of the smaller communities that don't have a lot of resources, that we can maybe bring some services in there. So, that is going to be the big things. We are going to look at, really looking at intersections of gaps and needs. We've seen some of our aging population does not know that there's resources like LIHE up there. So how can we utilize our volunteers to be able to do that? So, we've started planning on how we can coordinate with different organizations here, food delivery. We've already met with other transportation program. And we'll just kind of continue those and see where, okay, this could be a space for us. One of our advisory council, I think, has us all set up that we can use the library whenever we want in her town. So we're kind of getting there. The other thing is, last year, I know Roxanne talked about an EARN program, which would be the ability to, well, we know our volunteers go out of their way, and they get compensated for mileage. We can't compensate past the actual medical appointment, but we know they're taking people to the bank, the post office, those kinds of things. So we did receive a grant that we're able to start piloting that and be able to compensate at least for the mileage, to be able to do that. So we think that's a big thing, too. We also are really maybe looking, exploring with ECI. I know that they did a lot of food delivery for some of the child cares over the summer, and so maybe we could utilize our volunteers to help out with that as well. The other big thing, I think, that we would love to be able to bring into our volunteer centers, we look at expanding, is that we do a lot of disaster work at United Way as well, and are putting the finishing touches on a volunteer reception center, and have contacted the new EMA coordinator, and he said, come on out whenever you want. So we would love to be able to talk through that a little bit. And there is a program called PrepWise that we're leveraging volunteers to be able to do as well, which is helping our aging population be ready for disaster. And then finally, we have hired a full-time VIDA person, which is the Volunteer Income Tax Assistance. This year, I believe, if you make under sixty-seven thousand dollars, you can have your taxes prepared for free. And we are currently in Jones County and Lynn County, and next year, we are going to be in Benton County. And again, it leverages volunteers to be able to do that.
They used to do it here.
Do they? Yeah, so we would love to be able to get that back and going. So we are, we've requested the same amount, twenty thousand dollars that we have in the past year, to be able to continue to provide and, and really expand. And what we're doing is bringing in other funding streams to be able to grow as well. We utilize the AmeriCorps Retired Senior Volunteer Program to be able to cooperate in this. And as you can see, our focus is primarily on our retirement and aging population with services that we're doing. Any questions?
I'm here.
No, I do that.
Your voice held out.
Well, we appreciate it a lot.
Your, the EARN running.
Yeah.
That would be a good thing to add.
Yeah, yeah.
I know they do it now.
I know they do, and I feel bad. Our, our, most of our funding comes from Heritage, so we have, it's very strict. So, the ability to just be able to provide a little bit of that, but yeah, it'll be really good.
We need to, while you're here in the building, have you met our VA or General Systems Director?
I haven't.
So she's out here.
Okay.
She would be a good one, because she gets those kind of interactions with people for those needs, so she knows it's available.
I'll pop it then. Okay. Thank you. Perfect.
She's just right down there, the VA G A L. Okay, great. Thanks, guys.
Amy, we've got five minutes. Got any reports?
I attended ISAC last week, two days.
I heard that, didn't I?
Yep.
So did Dave. It was good.
Lot of, a lot of good information. So I don't have better understanding of how they, how they get tax amount for the bare farm ground. That's, uh...
Mathematical nightmare.
Yeah. Glad I don't have to do it.
But he also sat through with the budget, you know, like I said, last year, we were above the three percent growth. We had three point eleven, so we were forced to reduce the maximum of three point five down. Well, this year, the bottom dollar was, or the bottom percent was two point seven five, and we had two point eight eight percent growth. So we're reduced to go even lower this year. And I showed Ron on the software, but it made sense to him after listening to it why that is.
Now, when did they notify you to go on?
Well, they, remember the legislation, this is like a ten-year plan?
Yeah.
So it's all going to be on a yearly basis, depending on our growth, with the valuations that we submit. And then they look at all those different factors, and now the Department of Management, they have it locked on that screen, or I can't go above, so.
And there are ninety-nine different routes.
Yep, because there were like twenty-nine, thirty counties that were above that three point five. So their goal was to get them back down, but the rest of us are kind of suffering as well, so.
Do you attend any of them meetings? One of them I seen on the internet. About sixty-five and older tax break for the county. We're eating that.
Yep, and they discussed that too. So all that, all those dollars of the individual tax statements that these people are saving, we used to get, to submit that to the state and get reimbursed. We do not anymore.
Yeah, I know. Did they have anything on that, explain that at all, or you didn't sit on one of them?
The one I was in, they, they talked about it, but there was no explanation. And I don't believe we get reimbursed on the veteran one either.
That one is different, like the Disabled Veterans Credit, like some of those people that get a hundred percent paid, yeah, we have paid some of that too. But there is a webinar this week to put on by the Department of Management. I think any of you guys can join in. If you're interested, let me know if I can do the link. It's just, they'll go over, it's, you know, it's for us, like for our deadlines and this and that. And that's why it's really important for me to know maximum masking, because we have to do that mailing sooner this year than we did last year. Which means the cities and schools have to do theirs sooner too.
And who pays for that?
The county. Actually, I'm putting it under the supervisors, because it's your budget. And that was probably at least eleven thousand last year that we have to pay. As one of those, you know, they were wanting us to cut, but we have to pay to do this, so.
Impressive.
I know.
Do you have, it was put out by the auditors, and they passed one around in one, one session, of the unfunded mandates that have been passed down?
Yep, and I, I think I gave Bruce one of those little handouts too, so.
That was rather interesting.
Yep, and we have the code sections to back it, you know, just like you'll see on those amendments, the juvenile, medical examiner, all those different things. I think I shared it with you last time too, but some of those PowerPoints that you sat through, they're out there. We can share more with them. I know I printed the one out for you. Yeah, that's what I was talking about, Bruce.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
All right.
Is that list expected to grow this year?
Depends on what legislation does.
It's a wait and see, okay? Franklin Haley.
Good morning. My name's Rick Handler, and I am here representing Pete's Hill Edition, and this is Haley McNulty. She's representing Southern Exposure Estates. Really, she's been the driving force to get this started. The two of us, working for those areas, have come together, and we've been talking quite often with Myron, trying to get the surfacing seal coated from Highway thirty south down to Seventy-Fifth Street, and then west on Seventy-Fourth to Southern Exposure. What you, the numbers I've provided you basically have come from Myron, and hopefully I have them right. I realize these aren't numbers that I'm dictating to you. It's just kind of what we've been using for the homeowners along the route to kind of get an idea of what the cost is going to be. So, we're really here petitioning the Board of Supervisors and the county to join together to seal coat that section of the road on Thirty-Second Avenue. I believe it's a, in talking with Myron and Tracy and other folks that live out there, as everybody knows, Thirty-Second Avenue really is a, in the wintertime, a snow catch basin where... So I think this is beneficial to, you know, everybody that lives out there, Benton County, and to us, obviously. We want to have it seal coated and get rid of the gravel. So, the numbers that I threw out here, just, I'm not sure how the money goes. My understanding is, you know, will be half of what the cost is, the cost that's out here, or estimates that Myron provided us to get the job done. Weren't sure if there's an interest rate that goes along with it, how it's compounded. I just did a, a quick one-year, three percent, just to get an idea for everybody to know what the cost is. Did that with a one-year payment that would be done over either five years, six years, or seven years, so that it could be assessed to our tax base, or that assessment to be paid as a yearly thing on our taxes. That covered all that? Questions or, you know, for us, I think there's several people that probably would probably come up and pay it a lot quicker than the time. But there are some older folks out, and I think both additions, that, you know, all they have is their social security. So, you know, that's why I put the five, six, seven, you know, if we can stretch it to the seven, that would be great for them, or even six years, to kind of keep that yearly payment down below two thousand. But I realize the county has to, you know, fund everything. So, you know, whatever, we can work together and get this project done. We are on board. We've got the sheet with the forty-one or forty-two names, depending on which avenue. There's forty-one people that takes it down to Pete's Hill Edition and to our entrance, and then from Seventy-Fourth over to Southern Exposure. We have about another tenth of a mile, or I'm not sure how many feet that is, Myron, but there was an additional cost to do that, I think it was like another twenty-two or twenty-five to go that. And if, I got, the difference is like a, you know, a ten dollars a year. So I may be able to talk everybody into picking that up, because I have one family there that couldn't participate just because of the cost. But if we can get that extra tenth of a mile done to the west on Seventy-Fifth Street, and everybody's organ, and it's only, you know, another additional ten dollars a year, I think we can probably do that. But I've got to get a meeting set up to do that, but we have plenty of time to get that. We have the, the signatures and everybody interested to go to Pete's Hill, so another tenth of a mile shouldn't be a, a deal breaker.
I was trying to look, Myron, can we spread that more than the five years?
Um, I've...
I'm trying to look in the code. I don't, don't think we have, but...
I think that's up to the board. I don't know, Tracy was doing a little research. I thought it came from you, Haley. But I think the board, I don't know that it, we have done five on all of the past projects, but I don't know if it's spelled out that it has to be five, or if the board could choose the term on that. And if the board could choose the term, it could be more or less than five. But that, the handful of projects, like we said, we have done in the past, have all been five years. But I don't know if that code section, that the, that is not necessarily mentioned, but has been used. When we did the first project, I know we had auditor, auditor then at that time had contacted a law firm, and they walked through the process on how to do that. But I think it's, I think its term can be set up by, by the board. You asked Rick about the percentage. I know another project, quarter mile in length, that we're going to do on Seventy-Fourth, right off of, off the old highway here, just the end of 2024. All the paperwork was done, and the county chose three percent as the interest rate.
Let's kind of let, we checked with our treasurer what we were getting on our dollars.
That's kind of what I put in the figures, assuming, talking with Myron, that that's what it's going to be. So, we have a pretty good idea where the money's going to fall year to year.
Yeah, and that was just about, was that December, I think we'll chat, so.
Okay. So, I guess that's our petition to the board. We'd love to partner with Benton County to get this done. And, you know, looking forward to working with you and getting, you know, the next step of what we need to do, or go from there.
I guess the next step would, you'll have to figure this in your budget for next year, right? Forty-five, forty-six?
With the signatures you have on this petition, Haley, does that, to your knowledge, cover kind of the initial petition aspect?
Yep, but we would still have to prepare the document for...
Each one of them to sign, yes.
Because then I would give that to our treasurer, and we would put that on your tax statement.
Right. I think we have signatures for all the way down Thirty-Second Avenue. All, my understanding, some of the farmland where there's no houses, we'll pick up that cost, but we don't have to have them sign off. Is that correct, or so?
Yeah, we've got, what, three or four additional, like, farm landowners that don't have a home there, that are also...
have a home there, that are also willing to participate. There's a couple that, that didn't want to, that own land, but all the homeowners are in.
Right.
I'll probably assign the, I'll put the parcel numbers to you on here, so it's easier for us.
I think, I think all the way down, the only one that didn't sign off, as you get to Seventy-Fifth Street and go west past our addition, it just have one house. The other one actually owns property in Pete's Hill, so it's kind of, we, we kind of went in with the mindset, instead of trying to figure out how much each person has along the route, and charge them so much a foot, we just said, hey, you're in for a penny, you're in for a pound, let's all do it together. So, that's kind of the direction we've gone from, you know, we're all one unit, and dividing it as equal as you can. So, that one unit, just past Pete's Hill, that's not in there, the difference is so minimal. I want to include the guy that we're going to on the end, but I, I don't want the deal to fall apart because of that, you know, one person, if it, if it becomes a sticking point. I think it's under, you know, seven, seven dollars and something difference for that tenth of a mile divided amongst forty-two people, so it keeps, you know, the cost really isn't that huge.
Now, Myron, on Seventy-Fourth, you made a contract with them three people, if I remember my memory.
Correct.
So, we'd have to do the same thing with you guys. Each individual would have to sign with their legal...
Well, we, we prepare the petition, contract, and waiver, it's called, and you guys would formally sign it.
But each one of them would have to have their legal description.
Well, for parcel number.
Yes.
And, yeah, between, I can look them up and put that on that form.
But what I was getting at is, the first thing that we got to do is start this process. That way, he can figure this in his budget for come July one.
How soon are you thinking to do it, like?
Good question. You know, I know that in order to address some of that Thirty-Second Avenue, as Rick mentioned, of where all the stone catches, is doing some grading work. I've not talked to all of the property owners affected on that farm ground, on how exactly we would approach that. I mean, I talked to one of them last week on the phone, just general terms. I briefly talked to one the night we all met at Nate Shin. And Nate being one of those, just, he was open to discussing, you know. My primary interest would be on the west side of the road, but there are a few areas possibly on the east that would benefit doing some work too. So, there's some coordinating there with that farm ground, how you would address that with crops and tiny type of deal. With the overall cost on this, it would need to be bid out to a contractor to do, and how quickly all that information could get put together. Trying to keep it as simple as possible from my perspective. I don't want to spend three days out there surveying everything if I can avoid it. But I also know there's some information that would need to be gathered. I guess, say, just placing most of the turf on the road can be easily figured on paper. Is it something that could be possibly done later in the calendar year? It's a possibility. You know, granted, we're talking post-July first, but to do the seal coating portion, you couldn't do that too late in the fall to get the overall product everybody wants. And who would be available to do it from a contractor's standpoint may turn into a spring, summer of twenty-six project.
As for some of the dirt work, these four, you could have it in your budget to maybe start on that come May, June of this fiscal budget yet?
Um, depending on who does the dirt work, and how we would do the dirt work. If, if some of the dirt work were done by Secretary Rutzforce, the crew that would be doing that work are the same group, crew that does the dust control aspect. And so, you've got them involved pretty heavily in May into early June. Takes some coordinating, and May would be probably impossible, but June might be a
Now, on these roads, there's no more bridges, or culverts would have to be placed before this project starts, right?
Um, I need to double check that, but they wouldn't be anything of major size. I can't remember what's, I had evaluated the box culvert that's under the seal coat now, just south of the storage bins before we did that. I can't remember what else there is, as you continue that other mile and a half. I don't think there, we replaced the one down at the intersection, going just north of the entrance into Pete's Edition. Both the big box culvert at the intersection, but then we also replaced a thirty-six inch diameter pipe that was right there by Victor Sabetka's field entrance. So, I don't think there'd be more than about one, and we're talking much smaller diameter that's really easy to coordinate and install in a few hours for the most part. So, not a, not a major expense, and not a deal breaker really, if something needed to be replaced.
So, our next step is, then, Haley, do we wait till the paperwork is, and then vote on it?
Probably, because you want a better estimate of the cost. Are you going to go with the cost right now, what we shared?
We have used our estimate in the past. I know when we did, looking back through some notes over the weekend, when we did the seal coat from two eighteen, where Bill's Body Shop used to be just out here north of town, and went north towards Rogers Park, my estimate ended up being a little bit lower than the actual cost. However, the other ones that we have done have been pretty close. One project that we did outside of Opana, the board at that time set the dollar amount for three individuals just outside of Opana, and I think my project cost was just a tiny bit more than the county absorbed, but the board stuck with the numbers they set up front. The other ones have been half of the ending project cost, so.
I mean, I, you could probably get it prepared at least before taxes go out too, so we can make sure we get that on there. And then, did you say there was a couple more you were going to add?
Well, the, the, when you get to Pete's Hill entrance, there's three houses there. The one on the end, I'm not sure what the address is without looking it up, but it is where we had Myron figure it out to. Well, then, one before him doesn't want to participate, but the cost to get to the end of that is like another twenty thousand, you divide that by forty-two people, you're only, you're less than ten dollars. So, I, that's really where I'd like to go to.
So, just basically go off of what we have right here.
Yeah. I think Myron's figures have been pretty close, so.
Okay. Yep, Myron and I can, we can prepare that petition contract for later. We'll get that.
I guess the only, my only question to the board would be if, so I, I have all the signatures for everybody up to Pete's Hill entrance, minus that one. The only thing we don't know is, or that I don't have, I haven't had the time to get everybody in Pete's Hill, Southern View, that takes quite a bit to get us all together to talk about that one house we're going to absorb, but the ten dollars, and Haley and I told them, I said, it should not be a stumbling block, should not stop the deal. But if we get to that point, as they're going out, and everybody says, well, what's this extra? Seven dollars ninety-eight cents, which I don't believe will happen, we could stop at Pete's Hill and still be good.
Okay.
It'd be a lesser, but not, it's not that much of a stop, but...
You got that figured in on Myron's estimate to go the extra little bit?
So, the, this first one that you're looking at, a eight oh five, is to the Pete's Hill Edition. There was a little bit confusion on my part when we were talking. We thought his estimate took us down to Pete's Hill entrance, it only took us to Seventy-Fifth. And so, there was a little bit more we added in, and so then to go that extra tenth, I think it's like another twenty-two five out, and so that's, that takes it to, if you add the twenty-two five on to the eight oh five, I think that's, and if you figure the cost in on that, you're, I mean, you're so close, it's not... We got both of that in there, Haley?
Yeah, I think you said eight twenty-seven five, Myron said eight thirty-five, so, right, eight hundred and thirty thousand to go to that.
And it's nothing to vote on, according to the agenda, so you're just presenting this too much to them. Any questions?
So, your, your little bit that you're going to add would be, you go to the west?
Correct. It all looks like it's Pete's Hill, but there's four houses there that actually, yeah, right there. And so, we'd, we'd only be doing about a tenth of that. I think there's two tenths there, but just, it's just the first tenth that wanted to participate, so. I guess the question I'd lay out there, somebody asked me, I didn't have the answer, is, so when they assess that to the tax roll, does that start after the project's done, before the project's done?
It's usually after.
Then until after the project is completed.
So, the first payment wouldn't be made till sometime in twenty-six if you got it done in the latter part of twenty-five, is it?
Correct.
Okay.
We added on to it, it'll show up on your tax statement, so, if they pay the first half.
Yep. All right, thank you.
And as far as the, the timeframe too, we, we did talk to our neighbors about the five years, so if that's what it has to be, then that's, but, you know, even if we could get it...
But if, if they can choose to go longer, you would infer it longer?
Yeah.
Just on some, for some people that are on...
What I researched, we can set how many years?
I think, yeah, they can, I was just looking at the code. I think they're right, they have the discussion.
We can, yeah, we can set.
Okay. Yeah, we would appreciate it.
It's the idea of something down the road, where I'm long gone, the next supervisor's got to deal with that, that, hey, you guys did seven years for them down in Norway.
Sure. Well, it'll be in the minutes for history, so. And that's why I was thinking five, because the last few weeks...
I assume that, you know, you could pay it earlier. Nobody would ever want to say, no, you have to wait, pay me later, but...
Yeah, I'm sure you probably even have maybe a few ones write a check and be done with it, don't even put it on the tax.
Yes.
That's fine. That's what we got going on Seventy-Fourth right now. They wrote a check and it's...
And the only, there's just a few that are, you know, are on a pretty tight budget, so if you can stretch that out, that just helps them.
Yep, yep. I understand. Okay.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you. We'll have between Myron and Haley work together, and keep you informed when they get some of the paperwork done, and, you know, probably leave you, Haley, if you want to run around and get the signature on them contract.
Well, we'd have to prepare that document first, is what we're doing.
That's what I said.
Yeah, yep, but I'm happy to help.
Okay. Otherwise, I don't know, I mean, it looks like you have all the signatures here, if we would, but...
Well, I just sold this as like, we intend to participate. We said there was some...
In the past, we did it on comment.
Yeah.
I would just assume by order of contract, like you did on the other three.
And that's all you're anticipating, so that's fine.
And this is just to let the board know that they are wanting to participate, and you can see their signatures there, but we know there's a contract coming.
Okay.
Could I get one of your emails, maybe, so we could make sure we get the right owner list and parcels too? We'll just write it on, yeah, sure.
Do you guys have any questions?
No, I'm familiar with yours, and I actually drove it there today just to get a good look at it.
Two different associations.
If I remember right, it's the highest traveled road in Benton County, gravel road.
Seventy-fourth is?
Thirty-second Avenue.
What with all the development out there?
Um, it is now. Up until this past summer, the highest gravel traffic count would have been east of the Oak Grove Church, going over to Wayne County, that we serviced without.
I can see they're having a hardship on that.
Now, a couple of those coming off of that, like very close. But I believe Thirty-second Avenue between...
So, those houses on the road, are they part of your association?
No, no. Four of them that sit there on their own. They were built before the addition was made. The farmers on both sides of the road are all on board, and then we have one that's, you know, his land's on Seventy-Fifth going to the east, but he wants to participate, so.
I think under the code, Ray just messaged, allows ten payments on the assessment, up to ten years.
Ten years.
Up to ten years.
Yep. You must be listening.
Okay.
Three eleven point seventeen. I was reading three eleven, so.
See, that's what I thought.
Yeah. For some people, that'd be probably good to go ten years on, but for most of us, that we should be able to do it at six or seven, so.
Well, maybe if you guys talk to certain ones and just kind of let us know, so we know the amounts to split out.
All right.
The library board.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Kelly Hinkle, and I am here on behalf of the Benton County Library Association. I am the library director here at the Vinton Public Library, and I'm joined by a couple of our fellow directors. We've got Marge McDonald here, who's the director at the Schelsberg Public Library. We have April Stull, who's the director at the New Hall Public Library. And then Jen Kreitner's also here. She is our rural representative of our Vinton Board, and she was just able to join us off. So, we, along with the directors from Atkins, Blairstown, Van Horn, Keystone, Bell Plain, Norway, and Garrison, are all members of the Benton County Library Association. We hold the contract with Benton County for providing library services to the rural residents of Benton County. We also hold a contract to provide library services to the residents of Luzern. We each have our own governing library boards, which have rural appointees per the terms of each of our city ordinances. We meet at least four times a year. We rotate our meetings around to our different libraries, and we have bylaws and officers. Our agenda items vary, but they include relevant policy topics, updates from the State Library of Iowa, brainstorming sessions, and more. We use our meetings as a time to roundtable and provide updates on what we're doing in our libraries, and we just serve as critical resources to one another for the things going on, all things library. So, we're here today to introduce ourselves, more than anything. In looking back over the last few years, we didn't see that the VCLA had come in front of the supervisors in a while, and so we just thought this would be a good time to introduce ourselves, give you a description of what we use, the funds that we receive from the county for, and then answer any questions that you might have. You've got the numbers in front of you of what has been traditionally provided to our libraries. We are so grateful for that. We are not here, or we are here today asking for the same amount for this upcoming year. We don't have any proposed changes at this time. But again, just wanted the chance to come in front of you and describe our library services.
Thank you for doing that, because I know it's been, it's been since we were at the courthouse.
Okay. Well, good. Well, like I say, we're, we're glad to be here. I want to talk just a little bit about both circulation, like what we use for our physical and digital materials at our libraries, as well as programming, because your funding is critical for both of those things. Library circulation refers to physical and digital materials that are checked out from our living them. Your funds also help us provide our page... Your funds also help us provide our patrons with digital books and audiobooks. So Libby is a subscription service that our libraries pay to the State Library of Iowa, and then that gives our rural and our city residents ebooks and audiobooks on their phones, laptops, tablets, whatever they want, and those are different titles than what we have in our physical collection, so it just expands the titles that we're able to offer our readers. Now I'd like to talk a little bit about library programming. That refers to the activities that we host at our libraries. These include having guest speakers, craft nights, puzzle exchanges, writing workshops, book clubs, game nights, after-school programs, summer reading programming and more. These programs can contribute to the quality of life of our residents, as well as contributing to a culture of learning and a love of reading. Some programs are more expensive than others, such as our summer reading program, Magicians, Jugglers, Science Wizards, and more that our kids enjoy. To give you a good idea of the variety of programs offered throughout our county, I asked our BCLA members to share with me some of the special things that are happening at each of their libraries, and here are just a handful of the responses. Bell Plain Public Library holds a Friday Fun Event on the first Friday of every month. There's a group of older ladies that attend, and they love gathering at the library to visit. It doesn't really matter what the program is, they stay and visit over refreshments long after the program has ended. The library's very proud to offer them time to socialize, and the same can be said for their children's storytime. The director notes that any time people can gather in person with interactions is just a very positive experience. Norway Public Library's circulation hit an all-time high in fiscal year twenty-four and nearly doubled their circulation from the previous year. And as librarians, we love to point things like that out, because we wonder, you know, are people still reading physical books? You might get that question, and the answer time and again is yes. And not only are they still reading them, but that circulation is growing. Benton Community School District began having an early out every Wednesday, so the Norway Public Library started a kids program at that time. They see about twenty people every Wednesday afternoon for the program, mostly kids and grandparents. It gives them a safe place for kids to spend time reading, doing crafts and hanging out with other kids. And it really serves as a community center for Norway. There is not a bar or restaurant, and so book clubs, a lot of community organizations utilize their library just simply for the space, and so that's even above and beyond those programs and circulation. Keystone Public Library's craft time program, every school, or after-school, excuse me, each Wednesday, impacts a really large number of people in Keystone. On average, at least ten to thirty kids and always about two to five parents come. It's always free of charge. Toddler time is very popular, they have a story, a game and a craft with a parent and a child, usually four to six parent-child pairs. And in August, their library held a teddy bear event, which was sponsored by a local business, Main Street Bakery, which is right across the street. Since they sponsored, the thirty kids just needed to pay five dollars per child, and they had a nice stuffed animal of their choice. And so Laura, the library director, shared that her granddaughter made a sea turtle that she loves. So lots of little stories like that. At the Van Horn Public Library, the kids love the foam cannon in the summer, and if you haven't seen one of these, it's exactly what it sounds like. It's this cannon that just shoots foam over a playground or a lot. The kids just, they wear their bathing suits, they bring towels. It, we had it in Vinton this past summer, it's just a lot of fun, and the kids associate those fun experiences with the library. Van Horn shares that they partner with the Benton County Conservation, and that the children really love learning about wildlife and how to care for the animals. And at the Vinton Public Library, we've started several book clubs and writing series. We've recently expanded our library hours to include two nights each week and one early morning to make ourselves more accessible to working adults. We started a memory cafe for adults living with dementia that meets twice a month. And for the kids, like many of our libraries in our county, we partner with Tanager Place, ISU Extension, the Iowa Children's Museum, the Blank Part Zoo and more. All these partnerships add variety to our programming that we ourselves would not be able to do, and a lot of those organizations do their part to make themselves available at no cost or low cost, 'cause they acknowledge the importance of libraries in kids' lives. So we have dozens more stories like these about fun and creative programs happening right here at Benton County. We, as directors, believe in the power of libraries to transform lives and to improve the quality of life for everyone that attends. In fact, a recent study from the New York Public Library demonstrated that individuals that use library services in their communities have significantly higher well-being than individuals that don't use the library services. And that increased well-being is greatest among individuals who actually spend time in the library beyond just using the digital resources. So as the stories I've shared with you this morning demonstrate, we, as directors, know this to be true, 'cause we have the good fortune of seeing this play out every day at our libraries. So again, we just thank you for the funding that you provide to us. We believe in the services we're providing to our rural residents, and I'd love to entertain any questions that you have for me.
I got one for Haley. I'm a laws firm.
Oh, that been London above same every year?
Yeah, the la, one of the last times they come in, that was when Schelsberg grabbed the additional, was it five?
Twenty-five hundred.
Yep, and the same at Vinton. But if you look at the ballot that we passed for the local option sales tax, it does mention the libraries on there, so. So I think, you know, that was kind of as needed basis, but if they were to need more, you would.
Correct, yeah.
Well, I know that in front of the Norway Library, there's always cars. The place is really new compared to what it was two years ago.
Like even daycare people come to the library for your entertainment or storytime.
Yes, yep.
I've actually attended a few of the events at the library.
I know, Norway does a pumpkin carving. I've been involved in that a couple times.
It's messy.
It is, but it's, it's always well-received, the pumpkins are donated, the kids draw what they want on them, and then we do the kind.
Fun.
Yeah, so it's, then they get their picture taken and have cookies and stuff, but it's, it's a good deal.
I know, like, we've even had residents come in here and they've gone to the library to look up our old minutes, 'cause you guys still keep the newspaper.
We do.
On digital.
We do, yep, we digitalize all the archives of the paper.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
You were the one that left on my desk, thank you.
Thank you, Myron.
Thank you, we'll be in touch.
All right. Sharon. You guys are the only ones left.
Ran everybody else out?
Yeah, we cleared them out.
Well, gee, it was a busy morning today.
Yeah, well, it's good.
Come up the hot seat?
Where do you want us to start?
Right there.
So we've been just going through some budget items in our current budget, and it appears we're gonna be pretty short on wages. Haley and I and Josh have been discussing, we're about, what, fifty, fifty percent?
But then Ron realized too, do you guys recall when they went back in and gave everybody that additional, but the budgets were already submitted?
The budget was turned down, and we did a cost adjustment.
'Cause they went back in and let the union, didn't everybody have it?
But they didn't get it?
They do, but.
They got it, but it's not in the budget.
Because when we originally, we had the budget adopted, remember? It had to be sent to the paper, we couldn't go above, and you guys said make it work within the budget. But you can't, it's gonna be hard to do that, because how can you cut other services out to save for that spending authority? So those wages and withholdings were already gonna be short then for that additional percentage you gave.
So we need to hire four, probably five people, and we don't have, there's not any money in there to pay them.
We need to bring the numbers back to where they were.
We need to bring up some spending authority in there.
We're at fifty percent of our wages in our budget now, and we, we gotta hire four or five people.
And that's to bring the, that's not additional people?
That's just to bring it to a current, current staff that we've been short for.
Months.
Yeah.
So I've been working with them a little bit, because I had to have the budget amendment to the paper last week, so we've kind of come up with some figures, and ultimately you guys will be the ones that decide at that budget hearing. But I talked with I Bailey at the audit firm, I asked if we could utilize the local option sales tax, because I'm supposed to use that for twenty-five percent tax relief, instead of transferring from that fund to that, if we can pay directly out of that, and he said he didn't seem to have any problem with that, as long as I had spending authority in that fund in function. So same with the software, you heard about Ben, the needs for tho, those things, so. So the current, the next budget amendment, we kind of put those additions in there accordingly. And that hearing isn't until the fourth, but.
But you should have some savings in your budget, with the people that left, or they weren't even figured in there.
Well, then you've had some payouts too, for people leaving, right?
So like the sheriff said, here we are in January halfway through the year, we only have about fifty percent of the budget left for salaries. We're four people short, that's not, that's not in the budget. We are almost through our hiring process.
We're short about two fifty, two sixty?
Minimum, probably.
Well, the other predicament we're in is we need to hire, we're thinking four right now. We don't have vehicles for these people either.
So we got, we just received three brand-new vehicles, so if we put, and here, I've printed out, printout of everybody where our, where we're at with our vehicles, we're kind of in dire straits. So we've got a lot of, a lot of high-mileage vehicles, so if we take these three and bring it, put them into our current fleet, that's not gonna give anything for our new hires to drive. So we're gonna need probably a minimum of three more vehicles also with full, with full gear in them. We, there's no money to outfit them either. And then we'll probably be needing another, another three July one, or thereabouts. Just depending.
To help break this down, if you just look at this first page, six-ten, six-eleven and six-seventeen, those three vehicles are all over a hundred and thirty thousand miles. Those three would need replaced with the three vehicles that we just obtained. But if we hire four more bodies in a month, they won't have anything to drive. That's why we need a minimum of three more vehicles right now.
Plus funding for equipment to put in them, cages, consoles.
Have you looked at the cost of any of these vehicles, or have you got any bids on anything?
So we just got three new Durangles, and that we just bid back in December, and I think they came to, what, forty, forty-four change each?
Without the.
And that's just the vehicle.
Okay.
That's just the vehicle.
I'm sure it hasn't gone down.
We assume they're probably gonna be about the same.
And what does outfitting cost?
Well, we don't know. We're getting bids on.
We have someone coming in this Thursday to start getting us some estimates.
They have the radios.
We do have three radios that we're tearing, we're tearing down. If you look at the second page, those two vehicles, those two have radios in them, so we're tearing those two down, and then the bottom vehicle on page one, that vehicle's being torn down, they have minimal, minimal equipment in them, I think. Basically, probably the only, the only thing we'll bloody reuse is probably the radios. So these new vehicles are gonna, so the new hires are gonna need a cage, a center console, radars, laptops, laptop stands, I mean, they're just, they're gonna need full outfit. And that could be.
Now that panel's probably down on top, top flight on it too. Doesn't have any of the new stuff.
To be honest, everything at the bottom in the second page probably needs to go pretty soon as well.
Which brings us to our next point, our in-car camera system. It's probably half of our cameras now do not work. It's, they've made some changes to their system where they don't have any more, they're getting rid of the in-car body cam docks, so we, it needs replaced. So we're getting, getting some bids for that also. I mean, that could be anywhere, I would say ballpark, probably three hundred, three fifty maybe, I don't know.
Let's say currently, the storage of the video is in-house. One company will still do that?
Some will, I mean, it just kind of goes back and forth.
They all, or basically they sell you the stuff and then it's cloud storage.
We're meeting with Motorola today. They have G-Tech and Exxon both lined up to come in and visit hopefully this week, so we'll have better estimates as far as that goes.
And these things aren't, these aren't wants, these are needs. I think everybody's body cam, for the most part, is working, but it's hard, you know, on a traffic stop, if, you know, if you don't have an in-car camera system, or.
The thing is, if we, if we hire four people, are we gonna stick with the current product that we have? That means we're gonna have to go back and buy, you know, three new vehicles, full in-car camera systems, which is the co-band.
Which is.
Or do we, do we make the change now and move away from it? 'Cause we're, like I said, we're bringing in three cars now, hopefully three more. Do we wanna keep putting in the old products? Which we don't have on hand, we have to order that new, so it makes sense to make the switch now.
Let me start at the first thing. As for hiring, I guess I'm looking, my figures in my hand. Four officers at least, you're banging close to four hundred thousand. By the time you start figuring insurance, everything else to go with it, so that's one thing. That's four hundred thousand just for them four.
Plus a law enforcement liaison.
We're making it the, for the last part of the budget for, for this year, so this doesn't carry over for your, but we're hoping for the next one.
We're trying to get just from.
Just to July one.
To July one.
From here to July one.
Correct.
So that's, we'll save four hundred thousand, throw that out. Then they need something to drive. So my question is, some of the vehicles that you wanna pull the keys, could a guy, the vehicles that you wanna pull the keys on, get the same new model, twenty-five, twenty-four model? Will they have the bar lights on top?
Well, that's what I was trying to explain to you, so like this, down at the bottom, this school car, it's, it's, well, I take it that's not one we're tearing down. So there's a two thousand seventeen Dodge Durangle, the one that. So there's a two thousand seventeen Dodge Durango, the one that Ron was driving. That's got a hundred and forty-five thousand miles on it. All that has is a radio. Doesn't have a light bar.
They don't.
It doesn't have a light, doesn't have a cage, doesn't have a, does it have a console?
It's got a cage and a console.
No, does yours have a cage? So there, there might be some stuff we can use. Um, like this pickup. That's the old blue pickup that we bought for Fitman back in the day. It's got a hundred and seventy. That's got a radio. That's it. And it's a Silverado pickup. Um, and then this Mark Impala, that's an Impala, they don't even make those anymore. It's got a radio. The light bar might work. I haven't really looked at it.
Yeah, you can't, like you said, that's on an Impala going to a pickup or Durango.
And we're getting rid of, personally, I'm getting away from the pickups. I'm going to the Durangos. It's an SUV, all-wheel-drive, a lot of place for storage for the guys' gear. There's just not a lot of storage places in the, in the pickups.
So the guy that we have doing the teardown right now, he's our uti- our utility officer. He thinks with what we have in stock and what he's tearing out of these, some of these vehicles. They might be able to cobble together enough parts for two vehicles at most. Now, they're.
Maybe.
Right. Not everything we need, but some stuff can be salvageable.
I don't know, I can't speak, I don't know that much about the sheriff department, how it works. But you can't share vehicles? I mean, that'd be, to me, it'd be nightmare. My stuff's in here today and I gotta pull everything out tonight and then the next guy.
Well, the problem is we have like staggered shifts. People come in at different times, people live in different areas. This is their office, this is basically the deputy's office for five years.
We had deputies bringing their vehicles out of county, taking them home. Which I, remember I voted to let them do that. I don't know if we still got out-of-county residents yet.
The stipulation that under the former sheriff and we're still abiding by is you have to live within ten minutes of the county line and.
And do we have deputies living out of county yet?
A couple. There was a couple we had that had recently resigned. But there is.
I, I would just sell to the.
So you're only like a mile?
Everybody's pretty close.
Yeah, everybody's real close. There was a couple guys that were a little farther away, but Dave, they resigned.
We had one, I remember, lived in Cedar Rapids, that's where this all comes.
He resigned.
Okay.
That's one of the possessions we gotta sell.
Okay, but if he resigned, you should have that car sitting there, right?
Lindeman's driving it, cause his blue pickup.
Got it.
Isn't, it was a blue one marked.
Got it, understood.
Like I said, we, we've been crunching this for a while, trying to figure out what we're gonna do.
Basically, you need another four vehicles then, for the new hires.
And we got, I mean, Baumann's driving the one with a hundred and ninety thousand on it.
Yeah, he was down at my place yesterday.
Which, which ones you gonna replace right off, Dave? You gonna replace the.
So if you look at the top, you get, you got six ten, six eleven, six seventeen.
Those three have the biggest, highest miles.
Those three need rotated out.
And that's what we thought, okay, if we get these three, we rotate them out, that leaves us nothing for our new guys. So the plan was, get the three that we have, get estimates, get them being, get them built. Get three more coming and then replace the current. Cause the three that we're gonna replace are still in service. I think it's more important to get vehicles ready for the, for the new hires. You know, we don't wanna put a new hire in a vehicle that's got a hundred and fifty thousand miles on it. So right now our vehicle, it's kind of a wash, if, if we get six. And we've got three already.
You got three new ones coming in that ain't on the sheet yet?
They're in here, or they're here, but, no, they're not on here.
They're not on the sheet.
But they're sitting in our locker.
Okay. These three that you got here, do you have the parts, the radios?
We have three radios, cause of the three we're tearing down. And like I said, we might have a couple cages.
They might be the outfit from the Impalas over.
No. Probably gonna need to buy some radars, computers, I mean, we.
Did you have extra radios for the sheriff's department for spares? Well, we did the regional project.
When it's, when it's all said and done, they get stuff torn down and moved in, they'll have enough radios. But they won't have enough of the rest. They might get two or three at best.
Well, in my mind, I'm thinking right now it'd be easier to keep the ones you got running right now.
Yeah, that's what the plan was.
That's what we will.
Get you three radios for the three new vehicles, get them set up.
Which we have the three radios, cause of the, the bottom vehicle and the, from the second page, those three, that's the, what we're tearing down right now. So yeah, we'll have the radios, but, and possibly a cage. But we're gonna need a lot of equipment for these.
The two on the back, basically, other than radios, none of the equipment will transfer.
Right.
Yeah, cause they're totally different brands.
Yep.
Right.
So do you have a?
And that's what we're trying to go back to all Durangos, just to keep it uniform. As long as they keep making them.
So do you have a number? Of all the stuff that you're, you're looking at? Based off of your best estimates?
Total, yeah. Probably a million.
It's gonna be a bunch.
Probably a million.
But while we're on that note of budgets, you know, we talked a little bit about that. Years ago, we used to pay for some patrol employees, vehicles, et cetera, out of our rural service fund. With that being said, because we're forced to reduce our general basic levy. And we've also talked about the need to increase the law enforcement contract fees that we're getting from the cities. Right now, the cities can all levy for law enforcement. Whereas we're getting forced to lower. It's time to start looking at increasing those fees.
We weren't gonna bring that up today, but it needs to.
Well, I was when I, after I learned more and more last week at that conference.
Same.
It's, it's an eye, it was an eye-opener for sure.
What is our rate, thirty-two fifty?
Thirty-two fifty.
That doesn't even cover the hourly wage, but loan vehicle insurance, you know, you know all the.
Yeah, but some food for thought while we're talking the budget, like, you know, maybe now's the time we move some around. For that rural service too, to save on the general fund. Because a lot of them are out patrolling in the rural.
Do we have, I know we've talked about captured funds. Is there a program in place for that, to replace these vehicles?
You have committed funds?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, some, some departments do, like our land use office does that. Um, I know years ago, we used to have, just be on a constant rotation.
And that's what I wanna get back to. I feel like, I mean, there were some COVID issues with some ordering some vehicles. But we, you just have to stay on top of it and get vehicles every single year.
What's, what do you think in your mileage should be? I, I always had, uh, because we switched to the truck chassis, running the one fifty, one sixty before we got rid of them. And you got a bunch of them that are, you're replacing that are there in packs.
You're knocking on the door for a lot of them.
Right, we're, I mean, yeah, I'm not saying get rid of them at eighty thousand. But I mean, some of this.
But, but you've got.
Become the safety issue, in my opinion.
The Tahoe needs to go. The Durangos are all, the V-six Durangos are right there.
Right.
With the hundred and fifty. And then that.
And you know, you've averaged at thirty thousand a year, I mean, you look at some of these mi- you know, July one, you're gonna need, we're gonna need three more just to stay on top of it.
And then the old blue Chevy, that's a hundred and seventy, yep.
And even though.
That's, you're tearing that one down though, right?
Correct, yeah. And like I said, that's, all that has is basically a radio. Yeah.
Although I would say with the three we have now, if we could get three more immediately and then three more July one. I think that will set us up pretty good long-term to be on a rotation for.
Correct.
Three a year. It's just right now getting up and running with the new hires we have to bring in, we just don't have anything for them to drive.
So about ten thousand, is that one of these two Durangos up or more than that?
Probably more than that. I think installation just costs alone a seven.
Some of Dennis taking them apart.
Right.
Uh, I'm talking about.
But then you gotta put everything in them.
Isn't just labor, you said, seven grand approximately?
Yeah, six, it's expensive.
And then we're gonna need radar units, computer stands, laptops.
We're gonna have pretty good numbers after Thursday when the Raycom guy comes in to get us estimates. Probably have those in a week.
Yeah, we can get you some good numbers. And once you get a better handle of every, all the other gear. You know, obviously, if there's something we can use, we're gonna use it. You know, if it's an old cage or.
But I'm not talking about the three you got sitting in your lot. I'm talking three that are still floating in the air that you're gonna order. That's what I'm talking about. So I'm looking at your four deputies, that's four hundred thousand, all right? To get them going here, and that ain't gonna probably be till June, July. Hopefully it's sooner.
We wanna move as quick as we can, interviews are February fifth. It's feasible to have them in the door starting in March.
That'd be awesome.
Yeah.
Okay, so that, there's, there you would have somewhat, you got the three brand-new backups right now that are sitting in your lots. Just get them on the road, whatever it takes. You got parts to, get two of them on the road, right?
We don't know. Pos- I mean, we.
Maybe.
He's still tearing them down, we're trying to get inventory of everything that we got.
Now, the three vehicles that are still out in the air, they're gonna run you probably a hundred and thirty thousand.
For just the vehicles?
Yes.
Correct.
Just the vehicles, that ain't counting, that's why I was trying to get a figure. You know, I was like you when we first, I was thinking a million bucks too, but I don't think, it won't be no million bucks.
That was just a, that was just a.
I understand that, I, that's what I was thinking in my, my mind too, but realistically.
Instead of a half a year by the time it's ready, we're gonna be a, the last quarter of wages.
Right.
I think he's also including the in-car camera body cam swap.
Oh, okay.
We gotta, we gotta, we'll do a figuring that, yeah.
I think they're gonna get a terrible surprise on this in-car camera stuff.
It ain't cheap.
Yeah, it's expensive, it's terrible expensive. I know the company that they're with now, uh, we haven't been happy with for years. They were knocking on the door of eight thousand apiece.
That's just this, that's just per car. That's not putting it in.
Well, I'm the kind of guy that, what kind of service you get? I mean, do they sell you something that, if you got problems, do they come and help you or?
Well, we're gonna find that out.
I'm gonna say, I don't.
The system we have now.
It's your baby.
The system we have now, I've really not been impressed with, ever.
There's tech support, we can get over the phone, but when it's actual physical in-car cameras.
But access again.
Oh, no, they'd be out.
We did have them come in a couple of years ago, they fixed something, left, a couple of weeks later it was down again, so.
I'm trying to get somebody off of a leased estate.
Seems like Minnesota's about to close.
Train some of our own guys to be able to troubleshoot stuff too this time.
I don't want to volunteer, but I, me, our IT guy will probably, but he's got his hands.
He's gotta play full right now.
Yeah.
Cause he's taking over your stuff too now, so.
He's, he's gonna be involved when they bring the vendors in though to demo the products.
Yeah.
Your, for his knowledge, so they use his knowledge to.
Correct, so hopefully he can, you know, assist us instead of having to call somebody five states away all the time.
So, so if you think about it like this, we have three vehicles sitting here, we'd like to give those to the three new hires. Those three vehicles are gonna need a lot of brand-new outfitting. We'll cobble together what we have, but there's not a lot. The, the next three that we're asking for would replace the high-mileage ones on, on page one. So Baumann, Fairbanks, and Brant. So those three will remain in their current vehicles for now. And we'll keep pushing them, cause we have no other choice. Now those, that second tier of three vehicles for Baumann, Fairbanks, and Brant. Now we can remove equipment out of their old vehicles and put it in the new, the new vehicles. So there won't be as much of a, like a new equipment cost.
On a couple of them anyway, the, the Tahoe, it's gonna take a different cage and console and his radar will work. His computer mount, I'm sure will work. He already, you know, all these guys have laptops.
Lot of stuff.
Yeah. And then firearms, I mean, there's just a lot of expense, firearms, uniforms.
I'd say you should, you should have enough guns, but uniforms, uh, no bulletproof vest, thousand bucks apiece. And where are we at on the rotation there?
On vests?
Probably about.
Probably getting close.
Another year, two, I'm gonna say two at the tops.
They're good for five years, I feel like we've had those a while.
So what is their budget amendment?
Um, well, so I talked with Ben on the IT stuff. You know, cause that and the vehicles. We put some out of lost directly and then we put some out of wages, some out of the jail food. There was different areas we added spending authority for, to get us through to June thirtieth. Rough estimate. And the vehicles were gonna come directly out of local option sales tax.
The ones that we have and currently have?
No, those were already purchased.
We've already purchased these, out of our current budget.
The future, if you approve three more, I put that out of local option sales tax. And I have the email from Brian with I Bailey that I verified that with him. So we built light items out of lost for sheriff.
They don't know on, cause they gotta do interviews and all that stuff yet. So they don't, they have no idea on training of new people.
And push comes to shove, you know, we get by, we got the spending authority, cause we had to move forward anyway on other areas. Come May and April, if we start looking at it again, I need to have time before the fiscal year ends. We can't go over by the end of fiscal year, so. And by then, if you knew you had the hires or whatever, we could have more numbers, estimates to work with. But what I had to go off of right now, we're just doing a rough estimate, putting some in there. But when you look at our overall, you'll, you'll see the notice in the paper. Cause we had, you know, like Shelby, reduced spending. So our overall amendment looks pretty good, cause we subtracted six hundred thousand spending in one area and I decided it, and others.
If you don't have a million dollars, if you're asking for.
Right, he's gonna have to have, going forward to his next year's budget though.
I understand.
Probably, I mean, we'd have to really finagle, like I said, we need to have more numbers to go off of, because we might.
Like I said, we're getting vehicle bids.
Yeah.
We'll know more after Thursday.
And then out of his functions, they have different functions within their budget. You know, we, we have the authority by a board resolution, we can move some of that with what we have to work with. For now, I added the spending authority. As a whole in that service area.
Do you have any funds left over in forfeiture?
We did.
We did look at that, there is some funds in there.
I think it was twenty-six grand, I think we have, and Ray thought we could utilize that. Which doesn't sound like a lot.
One vehicle.
Maybe.
Or some equipment. We, we've, trust me, we've been brainstorming, looking at different areas.
Yeah.
We even talked, networked last week with other sheriff departments.
I said more than that.
But that, that's got nothing to do, there's no cameras in that.
Some of those old vehicles that we take off late, will there be any cash value on any of those?
Probably a little, not much.
Like not worth the trade, but maybe go out on that go bidding thing to somebody?
I mean, they're just still high mileage and rusty and I mean.
But then we could get them off our insurance.
Oh, no, I'm definitely gonna get rid of them. I just got rid of three Impalas to Tice. Got three out of the lot, got that off our insurance, so.
That's the stuff, I mean, you gotta look at some of those.
Right.
So what are we looking for here, Haley? What do you want?
Well, I think they basically wanted to present to you because, like I said, I had to get that notice to the paper last week.
Do you believe your notices are enough to go?
I have my little journal entry sheet he watched me work on, but I didn't bring that with me today. And like I said, the budget amendment is February fourth, but I could send you, my chicken scratches online, I have it where I wanted to increase. I mean, Ron could follow along too, so.
So with that being said, can we go ahead and open the bid for three more vehicles? Get them coming?
Regardless, I have enough in there for three more vehicles, cause I put that right out of the local option sales fund. But yeah, he would have to go out for bids and then come back and you guys would have to approve the lowest bid or whatever. To get them even.
Cause the three we have now, we're getting, we're gonna get bids and get them outfitted here as soon as possible. And then if we get three more coming to, that's gonna be a wash for the three vehicles that need replaced that are in service currently.
And we couldn't get into a bind, just like transportation, with how long in advance he had to order.
Well.
These, these weren't bad.
These aren't bad.
Okay, but like.
We ordered them and they were here within maybe a month.
But I think that was what was going on back from COVID. We got behind on our rotation schedule because we were always, we had budgeted for those vehicles.
You'd order them in January, they wouldn't come in until August.
So then again, you had to put that spending.
Humor me. I would suggest go out and get your bids. That's a first step because you, it ain't like you're ordering them right now, you're just getting bids.
You talking to outfit or new vehicles?
New vehicles. You said you want three. I'm not counting the ones that are sitting in your lots right now.
Okay, yeah, we need.
That's a done deal.
Okay, yeah, we need three more.
You want three more.
Yep.
There's no reason why you can't go out and get bids. You don't need permission for us to go out and get bids. Anybody can do that.
Okay.
But what I'd like to do is, you can get just for my benefit, make them price a Dodge pickup too. Just, just compare. You know what I mean? If there's like five, six thousand dollars difference between the Durango and the pickup.
But in the past, you've always had the sealed bids, come to the auditor's office and then you guys open them, so.
Right, but then.
And they could, they could bid both.
Yeah.
But going back to the pickup versus Durango, I've been out on the road. The pickups we get, they're not, they're not automatic all, or four-wheel drive. They're either two-high or four-high. They're rear-wheel drive. There's no place to put gear, no place to haul anybody. I mean, you might be able to haul a prisoner, but the other day I tried to jump in with somebody. All their gear is right where everybody's supposed to sit. I mean, so to me, the difference is worth, like I said, these guys sit in these for five years. You know, it's their office. Yeah, you may pay a little more, but to me, it's worth it. Plus you're gonna get a better resale, I would say, on the, on an SUV, but.
I know the Durangos, the V, you wanna stick with the V eights.
There are, that's all we're getting. The, the three that are here are Hemis and they're, they've saved back a bunch of Hemis for law enforcement.
Well, that's the case you just get. Cause lately, we only had, more than one company that's only been actually putting bids in.
We put bids out to three places, but only one returned the bid. And we kept them local in Benton County.
Now, since we got a new dealership on Cedar down here at New Hall.
We put out to them. They didn't return anything.
That's the new one?
New Hall Motors, right on thirty?
Fanhorn Motors.
Fanhorn Motors?
They're done. They're done.
Oh, so it's somebody.
Yeah, it's Sky now.
Oh, it's Sky, Sky Auto?
Sky Four, Sky Chevy or something like that.
Okay.
Maybe they'd be interested, you know what I mean?
I don't know. Was there, is there?
They were in Center Point.
Center Point?
Yeah.
I think that might be the same group.
Okay.
I think.
Maybe they'd be in a.
Oh, sure, we'll, we'll bid bids out.
Fanhorn never did bid on anything.
Urbans didn't either.
So what do you, what do you think? I mean, do you have a, a company that, to, to get these things fitted with the cages and the lights and all that stuff?
Raycom?
Company that does all that?
Well, there's Raycom are the same ones that we, um, got our radio system from. And then there's RC Systems who had our old, uh, radio system with. So there's basically two that do it. So we've kinda sticking with Raycom because they got our new radios.
Right, right. But like the lights and the cages and stuff like that, is that all just?
Those are just different manufacturers.
Okay.
I mean, there's probably two or three different cages available for them.
And you guys install those?
No, Raycom does all that.
They do all that, okay.
We're, we're utilizing Dennis, our utility deputy, to save some costs for tear down. Where normally they would tear them down, but we have utility deputies, so he's been tearing them down, saving, I don't know, two, three thousand a car probably by having it part, our in-house do it. But we don't have the capability to do installs. I mean, we can tear stuff apart, we just can't put it back together. And again, Raycom is coming on Thursday to give us, um, bids.
Haley, your information, uh, two cents. Do they, do we need to make a vote to give them permission to get, if you're gonna seal bids?
Ron never did in the past. It's just when they do the sealed bids, when they send out those letters to those, you know, car companies, then they put a date that they want those sealed bids by, and it's usually Friday and then, or Monday, and then you guys would open them during the live meeting and then. Yeah.
They go to the auditor.
Yeah, just because we file stamp them and put them up, they're not gonna be opened until the board meeting. But he could solicit, but you're not always gonna receive bids, so.
I already have the letter, letter drawn up. Is there a time limit that these bids have to be out for? Is it a minimum of thirty days? Could it be two weeks?
Did you publish in the paper with yours?
No, we didn't publish it in the paper. We sent them to the local dealers.
Okay, cause I know we, we've done it both ways.
Do we need to have the bid open for us designated time though?
Give them a couple of weeks.
At least two weeks, okay.
I would at least get it out and then we could put, get a date on there and let me know, and then I'll put that following week on the agenda.
They're gonna do that, then they gotta go to you.
Yeah, but if he gets that letter out, he can kinda go out and pick a date when he's ending the bids and I would have time to still.
But the bids kinda come to you, not him.
Yes, correct.
And I think that's kinda what I gave you that form.
Sealed bids will go to you. The board would then open, open them.
Same with what Myron does when he gets equipment.
So we'll send them out to those businesses that we've discussed. We'll send them to all of them.
You don't have to get the backup.
Okay. Like I said, I'm a firm believer in the SUV. Just our winners, pickups have their place, but I just don't feel like, I don't know, I just like the SUVs.
You lived in one for a long time.
Right. I mean, like I said, that's, that's these guys' office, you know? So you want them comfortable, you want them in something that, you know, they take pride in, wanna take care of.
We want you safe.
I think that's all the.
We didn't wanna be in this situation.
So I think that's all the good news we have.
Yeah, that camera one's tough.
Yeah. Well, we're working, we're getting some bids. The guy's coming today at eleven.
Cause I know in the past, the current company, they sent new ones out. Josh got one of them, put in his new vehicle and never did work.
Didn't even turn on anymore.
Finally, the guy came out and said, oh, this should have never been shipped.
It was obsolete before we even got it.
This should have never been shipped to you guys.
Well, I believe dealing with somebody who puts your hands around their neck.
Too bad Raycom, Raycom was a deal hooked in with our tower maintenance of all their equipment.
Now, do they have, does Raycom have a camera system that they install that they?
Recommend?
Recommend?
We can talk to them Thursday.
We could ask them, sure.
If you could keep it with, uh, and, and that was a problem in the past, you know, it was never with one vendor. They could install it, they could power it up, but after that.
That's it. We'll get you some bids.
Now at least you kinda have some numbers to work with going forward. You guys will have to kinda decide on some of those other factors. Now is when you wanna solicit the cities, cause now is when.
Yeah, we'll let you guys tackle the, tackle the contract rate.
I mean, I feel like we got some examples from other counties we can share with you guys to look over.
Now, I look at, this is still. Your ballgame, you know what I mean?
Well, he's, in, in the past, we have always met with the cities.
That's what I was thinking. You should maybe.
And a lot of times we have a supervisor.
We, we try to get them all in one. We did have one jointly before, uh, cause we had a, was it the EMA budget meeting afterwards or something? We did, and it's been, it's probably been three or four years since we've done that. And so they, but we still never really increased it.
No.
And but, so they've known and discussed it.
Yes.
And then we did the.
But the deal is, but again, I don't have that information with me. Maybe you can, Ron. When's the most these contracts start?
July one.
July one.
So we're already locked in the current rates right now till July first, but that's when the new budget year.
Right, but I'm saying the towns, cities have not set their budgets yet.
Nope, they're in the same boat we are.
So that's what I'm thinking. If you guys would send a letter out to the twelve, I think it is.
And I have an email list too, if we could generate that and at least get the ball rolling and discuss it.
Kinda give them a heads up that, hey, we're thinking more like almost double of it?
You probably don't have a choice.
Cause you have some cities, you know, that we're really covering a lot.
Some places can afford it, others can't.
But like I pointed out, they have that levy authority where we can't go anymore. We can't bring ours up to cover those expenses.
Well, I mean, you, it would help them figure in their budgets. If you could get that.
Right, but.
We already have cities reaching out, asking us what are the rates gonna be and, cause they're working on their budgets currently.
Right.
So I think if we're gonna do this, we need to move on.
But don't you guys set the rate?
They approve the law contracts when they come back to us.
We approve the contracts. It's kind of a.
I thought you told me you, the board sets the rate, no?
Well, they help. And, and kinda like we did with the, uh, dispatch rate. Where we met with everybody and set the rate in a meeting and then we were done. That's the way we do this too. That way everybody's on page one.
Realistically, how much time would we have to try and get this done?
I would say let's start, if we're gonna do, seriously do it, send them a letter. Kinda come up with a dollar amount in your mind.
Do you have thirty days before the cities have to?
Oh, yeah. They all have to have their preliminaries though, like the beginning of March, so.
So let's get a meeting in the next two weeks.
Okay.
I mean, cause at this point, you know, and I'm gonna watch that webinar this week, but for us to keep using that a general basic too, we gotta start finding ways to either cut, save, you know, but, or we have to continue to provide these services with what dollars we have to work with. And it's my understanding this is gonna go on for ten years of legislation, so if we continue to have growth, we might be continued to force to reduce. But we don't wanna discourage growth in the county either. The only way the tax base comes from is values.
Okay, so we'll, we'll continue to get bids. We'll get the, the next bid out for three more vehicles and come back with some harder numbers.
Get your letter sent out.
And get letters sent out.
Did you want, like, there was a, one of them did it like in a, they had it set out for a time span too, didn't they, already in their contracts? Like they did like a CPI already prorated into those? Was it one of them that shared with us did?
Is it Urbana?
No, one of the other counties. They did like a five-year plan.
Oh.
Yeah, it was, it was another county that was just talking about they were gonna start doing contracts.
Yeah, but they were gonna like, do like a five-year, so they kinda know going, so you don't have to renegotiate every year.
Right. Like if they were kinda doing it on a per capita.
Yeah.
Yep.
They did like a increase.
Which that might be a better deal for some of these towns that can't afford.
The small towns, the real little towns would be a better deal for them.
Right. There's no, not necessarily a set number of hours we're gonna be there, but we're gonna be there, if that makes sense.
Maybe you wouldn't even have to put that, I mean, you're gonna go to the calls regardless.
That's what I mean. We're gonna be there covering calls. We just might not give them.
If they want a car, X amount of hours, that could be negotiated with them.
Right.
Yeah, cause what was the rate now, thirty-two fifty?
Yeah.
Wear and tear on the vehicles?
Well, it doesn't even cover the wage.
The wage, I know. I mean.
The wages on average, it doesn't cover.
You gotta start looking at ways to either save or increase your cost.
We talked enough. All right.
All right, hold on. I'll give them your sheets. Did anybody else want one? You gave me extra, Robert.
Yeah, I did. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
We're gonna get your car out tomorrow.
What's that?
We're gonna get the car out of the crib tomorrow.
Does the car in a crib?
Probably some of your.
Oh.
I'm out of loot.
I warned you.
So it happens when you get stuck in.
That's what I said. I sit there and read that every morning and you're out of loot.
Okay, Dylan.
All right, well, we wanted to give you our budget to see what you thought about. As you know, we have seven members now. The state requires us to have training and that's where most of our budget's going. But also, also the state's requiring us to do more projects. So it, with that, it's cost, gonna have a cost with it, unfortunately. Biggest thing is we need office space because a lot of the stuff that they're requiring us to do, we can't afford to put everything out, work on it, put it back, you know, it, it just delays a lot of time, getting things prepared. So I, just coming to you guys to see what your thoughts are and any questions that you might have for us.
First question I got on your, do you have rental space in here?
Yeah, we added that on because in case we have to rent a place. You know, if you guys can't come up with an office, we're gonna have to do something for.
We just had an open records request from the state historic preservation, I think it was, something with the state.
Probably.
But they haven't followed up. I asked more questions, cause I don't know if they're, you know, these requirements and again, is that unfunded mandates on us? Or is the state gonna start picking stuff up like that? If they're requiring you to go to these things.
They're require, they require us to go. That's the state. In order for us to keep you CLG qualified, we have to take this training.
So right now, our office is that stuff back there and these filing cabinets here. And it's limited as to when we can work. One of our members, for example, works during the day and, uh, you know, morning and evening, she can work during the day, but sometimes there's things going on here. We're kinda between a rock and hard place.
We're kind of between a rock and hard place.
A lot of this training that we're required to take. We don't know what it's going to be next year, so how can we budget the costs? You know, um. We try to go with what's this year or previous year, so if it goes up, we might have to come back and ask for a little extra to, for us to be able to do the training. So.
Now, as for an office.
Yes.
Throwing it out here right now, we do not know a street, a daily. With the region. Has taken over.
Going from a region to a district.
Yes.
For mental health and, other than, I think they're just going to call them all behavioral.
So we got three offices. Have something in them right now. They do got no, technically right now.
They don't, so they have a job.
Yeah.
Or higher.
Yeah.
So, you know.
Bear with us.
Yeah.
Well, we, yeah, we, we just want to make sure that we have something in our budget in case we have to. We've already talked to people about rental space and that's, just in case. We don't want to be stuck, you know what I'm saying? In case we have to do something like that, because, like I say, with the state, we're making, putting requirements on us to keep you CLG qualified.
And that's where I'm trying to, to understand better, you know, how they, again, why we have to cover it. But to me, that open records request, I was taking it as they were trying to get a feel of what we spent out every year, like if they were going to pick up that money, but I'm not.
I haven't seen or heard anything on that from.
And I, I haven't heard anything back, and I tried to ask around, because a few of us did get that open records request, but we don't know what, what they're doing.
Yeah.
I don't know that it'll be this year, but possibly in future years.
Well, I hope, if, if they're going to pick up stuff, I hope they do. Because, you know, we, we got.
Especially for office space.
Right, yeah.
I mean.
We're, a lot of these communities, CL, historic preservations are communities where the community has a room or an office forum. It, it's, it's hard for us.
Yeah, wait till it turn red.
Oh, really?
There you go.
I can see why you'd want to have a place to go that's yours. That is, I mean.
Yeah, because we have our computers, we have all kinds of stuff, paperwork, right now, we don't.
I have goals for it here, if you guys are going to stay in here too.
What's that?
I mean, to not have, so that we can have it more friendly for the public to come in here, but we have to keep rearranging all the time.
Right, yes.
Granted, we would love to get to somewhere else. I've got some ideas, but.
I'd say bear with us till the first of July, because we will know by then.
Okay.
We have to.
We'll actually know probably before, but we have.
Well, I would hope so.
Before our budget.
Yes.
So I guess I'm coming, what, you have any questions on our proposed that we're doing other than office space, obviously?
Because otherwise, that was your only increase was for that office space?
Well, we, we had some training increases, we went from a request of nine thousand to like eleven now because of the training.
So do you have to go to that training yearly as well?
That's an annual requirement, yes.
Okay, so then I'm questioning the, the yearly Microsoft office with Ben, because I know he had a concern on some of that, right?
That's through, yeah, that's through the county, that's, so we can have our email and, as you know, everything's done in office, so.
Because they're not technically county employees.
But we're paying for that.
But, yeah, but I'm just saying, then you guys would have to sign off on our IT policies and such too, if you're going to use our county emails.
I thought we already did that.
And you guys, we have a new handbook policy, so I'll make sure we get you guys all that. Are you with our copier services then too? Are contracted?
No, I, I'm not sure.
Okay.
I know we.
You guys own that.
Yeah, we own.
You do, because like the county, we have a copier agreement with all the county.
Okay, no, this is our own.
I just getting up to Luke's speed on that. And then your phone, does it ring in here too? Like, what happens when you guys aren't physically here for the phone?
Right now, the phone's at my house, so I answer and then it rings. But it can, it would be here if we had an office, yes. And that is forwarded. Um, if somebody calls and leaves a voicemail, that voicemail goes through the system, plus it goes to one of our cell phones.
Okay, because once in a while, we'll get a call that like, I want to know who to go to, because they might want to look up some or have you look up some.
Well, and we can help people with getting on the National Register, um, getting grants to repair their National Register projects. There's stuff out there that, that we are also supposed to be involved with too. I know next year, every two years, there's a National Historic Preservation Program. In eighteen, I believe it was, it was in Des Moines, we all went to that. That's separate from what the training is. Next year, it's going to be in, uh, in two thousand and six, it's going to be in Minnesota.
Twenty-six.
Yeah, so we're hoping that we can do something where we can go to that also. Because that, that's a big deal to go, and you learn a lot of stuff nationally with the parks departments, the, the. Secretary of the Interior and the National Parks, because that's who we.
Yeah.
Are all with.
I know in the past, um, because I don't have a credit card.
No, we don't.
But you're not a county employee, so again, I have to look at the risks that are involved with that. So I would just suggest, when you guys do make your reservations, talk to those hotels.
It's over there.
They can call me, and sometimes they'll let us get prior approval. If it's going to come from the county, so that we don't have that where you need a credit card or whatever.
Right.
Or register, so when that time does come, because I know in the past, it was like too late and then.
Well, we got one coming up in Musketeen this year.
Okay, those are just my.
So we get you the information?
Ahead of time, but you guys are responsible to register.
Right, right.
And communicate with that hotel, but if they need us to sign off on, like, we're, you know, the sales techs exempt and that kind of stuff.
Right.
Ahead of time.
Okay. All right, well, I'll keep, I'll, I'll be keeping in contact.
Perfect, or Lisha or anybody in my office, they, they know all that, so.
Right, right. So, but, and of course, we always encourage all of you guys to be involved in any of our meetings or even the training, because that, that helps us with the state, you know, hey, you guys are showing interest in preservation. So that's always good.
Were you guys still doing that conference here, the one where we had?
We haven't got the, um. We haven't got the contract back yet on, or what do you call it, the grant information back on that yet.
Because I know in the past, we put that spending authority in and out of that one, just in case.
Right, now, is there, that's what else I was going to ask about is grant authority. Um, is that, is that extra in our budget that we have to budget for?
That's what we did in this current year, because you guys were going to apply for a grant.
Right.
So we put that other for a grant match.
Right, so, and, but, I think.
But we didn't hear, we didn't hear back.
We have not heard back anything yet, we should be hearing something.
If you are anticipating applying for a grant, I would suggest, put that spending authority in, let us know during the budget, but you cannot spend that if you don't get the grant.
Right, and that's something I would suggest that we do, because we don't know, we're always looking forward, uh, um. A city could come to us, or anybody could come to us for a preservation grant. So I would suggest that we put something in there every year, if we can. You know, obviously, you know, we don't spend it, of course, unless it's a grant.
Right.
So it's just my suggestion, because if it isn't there, we can't do the grant, right?
Correct.
Yeah. So I would, you know, what are the grants?
But the cities, if they come to you, they're wanting the county's historic preservation to pick up that match?
No, 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 people within the city, or, uh, within the county. Because we can help anybody.
Yeah, if you, you apply for that, us on our behalf.
Right, right.
I just want to make sure it wasn't the city's coming to historic preservation to match.
No, they would have to match, and they might come to us for support of some sort. So, but yeah. So, any.
I'm thinking in years past, it was twenty-five hundred dollars.
Yep, and then they had that fund three, because they had a different historic account. Years ago, they opened that separate account for things like that, for projects.
Mm-hmm.
I think the clock tower was one of them.
The clock tower was one, and the sheriff.
There was that little bit left in that one. Speaking of the clock tower.
Say, but, any clue where we're at, clock tower?
I haven't heard.
Well, the person was going to come down in December, wasn't it?
Yeah, it's supposed to be here, but he hasn't come back yet, and he wants to set the clock unit up in the courthouse, rotunda area. Where people can see it, know what it is, and then put it up in place. That's, that's the story I had.
They had to make special parts to fit it or something.
Yep, there was parts that the former place didn't do, did got in.
Didn't really work out.
There was quite a few, it was not enough to make it swing the right way, but there was us on the board, on that committee, who wanted to go with the guy up there.
So now we're with him and he'll.
He'll, yeah.
Get us when he gets us.
He's, he's going to make it, he's going to make it ring and ding and everything else.
Yep, so it's supposed to be coming back, he's had, he's had it now almost a year, maybe?
Oh, at least.
Yeah, so he's, it's supposed to be coming back anytime now. So, any.
I do have one guy that lies in the ass about that.
Yeah.
When it's a block.
Probably the same one that, every time I get stopped too, so, yeah.
I'm sure he speaks for some of the other people who think the same thing, but don't voice it.
Right. Any other questions on that? So when it comes time to register for the Musketeen thing, I'll get ahold of you and talk with you then, or your office.
Is that in this current budget though, right?
What's that?
That's this current year?
That's this current budget, yes.
That's out of this current budget.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
Because we don't know where next year's going to be, or anything to do with the, we won't know that till June. So.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good one.
Good batch.
You too.
Good to see you.
Stay warm. Well, I'm not sure I wanted to interrupt with Ben, because I know we have to pay per license on that, so. I didn't know where we were at with that, that's why I questioned that.
Yeah, I know where you were.
Because if we're adding, if we're adding all seven of you to an email, that's going to.
No, 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 no.
Just one main email, right?
There's one email, yeah, one main.
Okay.
The historic preservation, plus I have.
Okay.
So.
But yours is partial through email.
Right, yeah.
That's where I just want to know, because like Ben usually will budget that through his, if it's through our county licensing, so that's why I'm just. I need to understand it going forward.
Right, yeah, okay.
So I appreciate it.
Yep, if you guys need anything, let me know.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thanks so much.
Did you understand what I was talking to?
Yes.
Yeah. We've paid per, per user.
It's not, you know, it's.
That's why I just wanted to make sure.
It's a license, so there you go.
Yeah, yep, they got you.
Oh, yes.
Okay, would you agree? How much?
Well, like, if Ron, I know we wanted, we talked about some, I was going to bring up. You know, that saving in general basic as much as we can. That's why I'm trying to utilize the laws, like with those amendments. Getting that law, like, recouping some of the cost. I don't know if we want to like, start looking to some of our other revenues and. I don't know, I'm not so much scared of the issue, but if we keep going on the trend, increasing, but lowering our dollars coming in, it's not going to end well.
I would like to get a letter out from the board to the department heads. Okay? We just heard from the sheriff that, uh, you know, they're looking at a big expenditure on some stuff. Uh, which I do know is not in the budget.
But you realize the needs there.
Oh, I know, it's, it's a need, it's not a want, it's a need.
Well, and I think.
I would like to see a overall county budget decrease a little. But with some things we've been presented with, we've got sheriff's office camera system that needs replacing. This sick time conversion thing.
And did you, you guys asked around, there isn't that very many that have.
Very many that have that.
Like, big counties that have a big pocketbook.
Yeah.
Like Johnson County.
I think the way, if we were to entertain doing that, is we're going to have to put it back on the department heads and say, if you want your people to have this. You're going to have to agree to try to save in your budget, and at the end of the year.
But that's going to be hard for one department to do so versus another, and we can't discriminate.
That's right, some have a little leeway and some do not.
Because like, for me, I have my auditors and election budget to do. I have a special election next month, like, things come up and I have to.
You have to have the money.
Have to know that I have that there.
Have to be covered. So. Keeping that in mind, I would just like to give everybody, say, here's a bottom line for you.
So I do have a few departments that return theirs, so they're just figuring their own wage increase or whatever, but I think the compensation board possibly is meeting next week.
Okay.
I don't know if you guys are in on those emails. Did she say that, was it the twenty?
Thirty if not.
Twenty-eight, I thought Melinda said the majority was the twenty-eight.
Okay.
I, I could be wrong.
Today's the first.
So that would be next Tuesday night. So with that being said. I don't know if you guys want to have, well, actually, speaking of that, we're having the twenty-seventh is our regular board meeting, we're going to change it, if that's okay with you guys, instead of the twenty-eighth, it's the twenty-seventh, because Bruce has an appointment.
Oh.
I don't want him to miss out on some of these budget stuff, Harris first year.
I think that's.
So I've already. Yep, I've already rescheduled, we had Kirkwood Learning Place was coming in, she's fine with coming Monday.
That's next week.
Yep.
The twenty-seventh versus, yeah.
We're going to meet on Monday.
Yep, so I'll post that agenda Friday. Um, so if the compensation board meeting is the twenty-eighth, I could always give you a Zoom access to, Bruce, if you didn't want to come in public that night.
Yeah, what time is it?
Usually around six PM.
Six PM?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Melinda's trying to hammer that out.
Okay.
So for me to get, like Ron said, if you're going to send some guidance. Because I really need some of these departments that are, you know, bigger, to start putting them together. So if you don't want to act on wages right away, then I'm just going to have the departments submit.
That's all part of it.
It's huge, because then it's back and forth on the withholding.
Well, with the sheriffs out on wages, and until we talked about it last Tuesday, I thought, oh, wait a minute. We didn't have the contract done with that market adjustment in there, we submitted it with.
Yeah, and that's where it comes a problem, because the budget was approved and adopted in March, but these things that affect it. Like changes that we do last minute are with those, there's no spending authority, because it was already published and adopted. So to me, I'd like to be a little proactive and act on those big things upfront, so you can visualize as a big picture.
Just off the top of my mind, there's so many budgets you can't cut.
I know, because of the services we provide.
Department, it's.
We're not, I don't see a cut there.
You can't, I mean, if anything, it's going to go higher.
I agree.
Well, and we're, like I said, the jail and food provisions, everything is going up, but we're, but we're held down here. But we're forced to continue to pay.
Sanctuary road, you know, I mean, like, the fire right now.
The half a million dollar project right there.
And we're going to give them partial, but if you look at it, there's, you're benefiting the county roads in the long run. Those roads will be paid for years to come, right? Those roads will be paid for years to come, right? So, it's an investment.
We have, we have to maintain what we have and I would like to see us do that. We have to maintain what we have.
Everybody wants a rate, whether it's two percent or three percent or four percent.
And then we have to keep below the cap.
The budget, yeah, and I can show you that, you know, I mean, let me explain that a little bit since I showed Ron when we were there. Which you only got a quick list.
Oh, I.
Which I just forwarded you guys all through an email too that, that you can sign up for through Department of Management to watch some budgeting stuff. So. Yeah.
When was the, the gentleman gonna come in and talk to us a little bit about that?
He, Ryan, that was gonna bring back some figures.
Yeah, about the employees and the sick time.
Yeah, he was just gonna, because he, because they don't generate it, he was gonna have to talk to a third party to get us in touch. And that's where.
We can't afford that. And, and the thing is.
Nice gesture, but.
Oh, yeah, but it, I mean, if you look at, when you go through your life, you got insurance on your health, you got insurance on your, on your cards, you got insurance on your house, you, you buy extended warranties, and not a single one of them pays you money back if you don't use it. So, when you got something that you're not paying for, but you expect to be paying for when you leave, that just, it's like, wait a minute. It's there for you to use if you need it, but it's not something that you get to take with you if you didn't use it. And if somebody mismanages it and they get hurt and they get on extended leave, they don't get paid.
Well, and that's when we do have that additional with the county. We have that, we cover for the employees.
Okay.
So, like accidental, that's through ISAC.
Okay.
Um, and then the employees have that right to add their spouse or dependents.
Okay.
So, that's another benefit we added within the last couple of years.
And there's an ISAC, did you send an email about an ISAC meeting that's coming up?
Yes, there's a statewide supervisor meeting.
Yeah.
I think it is coming up this month, yeah.
Yeah, I think it was thirty.
Yeah, yep, and you probably can still, I have the authority to register you.
I thought it was, uh.
Or is it Zoom?
Zoom.
You have the Zoom, a lot of those, they do let you have Zoom. Um, you'll also be reached out to for your District Six meetings too.
Yeah, and then the Wellness Committee, um, they want to schedule a meeting as well. Yeah, I signed up for that. And she, she's trying to get a meeting together as well, Julie is, because they need to get rolling on it. I'm just trying to figure out when these meetings all are and what's going on.
Um, let me see.
I'm going to the Mental Health Region Meeting Thursday.
I've got Hartland on Thursday. In payment.
That's a good thing you took that.
Well, I, I know some of the, uh, when I, when they, when they start talking, I know what, I know what they're referring to.
I even made a point to talk to the lady and say, phew, I, I'm not in with your, your turn. She said, oh, it could take you a year. I thought, oh my.
Yeah, they throw a bunch of stuff around.
January, no. Registration closes January sixteenth, but a lot of times they'll still give you access. But the meeting is gonna be held Thursday, January thirtieth at the Embassy Suites downtown Des Moines.
And that's, but that one can be a Zoom, that's the ISAC?
Um, yeah, that is. That's your supervisor statewide. I don't see a Zoom option on this one. The one, other ones I've sent you is like for budget webinars and things, those can be Zoomed.
Okay.
This one looks like the same person.
And that's the thirtieth?
Mm-hmm. Whereas like you sat in on the different affiliates Thursday. So, a lot of times these ISAC events, like they have a summer or fall, spring, whatever, and it's all affiliates come. So, usually the first day is like general assembly. You're all listening to the same stuff, but then you break out into your affiliate groups. So, then like the engineers are in one room, auditor, and then you have your own agendas, but then like the social events and that's combined.
I saw it was well worth one time.
It was very well attended. Uh, I went because we have thirty new auditors, well, twenty-nine in the state. And so with our exec board, then we kind of go over like the real estate cycle and how it plays into the budget cycle. You know, because the values is what everybody bases their levies on, and then those levies come back. But, I mean, it was, it's overwhelming when you're a new, newly elected official. But, again, that's why we provide, their ISAC's very good at providing us guidance. Um, we, we have mentors, I don't know if they offered that to you guys?
Uh, I think they, they talked a little about.
Like I'm mentoring.
Make friends.
Blackhawk and Lynn, like, but they look at like the same software. Like I can show them a financial report I run for this or that.
Now, did they mention anything about, and it might have been you guys, somebody was talking to Tyler Tech, or Tyler about some software or something that people weren't happy with?
Well, there's, there's like two different softwares. There's Solutions and then Tyler Tech. I hear a lot of complaints on the solution software, but so, but that's just it, when you're in government accounting, there's not a lot that are familiar because they have to know when our legislation change, like, like these mailings, they have to, it's not just telling us how to do it. Now, our software has to make those adjustments to make that work. Or we had to submit, this was the first time this year, we submitted the valuations. Then we also had to submit our new growth valuations, like separate. And I think that's for legislation, that's the kind of stuff that they're looking at for tools for them with this tax reform stuff. There's just so much of it that the people don't understand that affects your software, your payroll software, your real estate software ties in with your financial software. Yeah. But it's, like you have user group meetings for those kind of things too, Ron. So, once you know what software your county uses, they'll have user group meetings, same with my election vendors. That's where these things are good at hosting those kind of events for all of us. And you might find, like your district meetings, like I was district president for four years. You hold your own little meetings as a district and then you can submit your legislative priorities to your affiliate. So, then the supervisor affiliate as a whole, probably what they're doing down there in January is you guys are talking about your legislative priorities. Because now is when the legislation is meeting, they might schedule meetings with certain legislators that are housing the, or you know, the top dogs, those committees, so you guys could go and meet with them, complain about these unfunded mandates.
Yeah.
That kind of stuff, so it's, it's really important. I know Tracy's like giving me the look, but it's important to stay involved and understand what they're thinking coming down the pipeline because it affects us.
Some of the decisions they made, they're maybe not thinking about where we're.
Well, they don't understand how we have to put it together, just like when they combined the city and school elections, how many ballot styles. You know, they don't look at the different boundaries and interacting, but. They think they're gonna have a better voting turnout, things, just the little things like that. And then that mailing. Like, we had a person coming in thinking that was their tax dollars, as a whole, they were gonna pay it all.
Yeah.
I will, let me pull up that.
We had reports. I had landfill, uh, Thursday. Quite, nothing going on there, but I also had tenants and WMA, the gal that were here first thing, the Zoom meeting.
It was a Zoom?
Yeah.
I'll stop down and talk to Dean yet today and see if he's heard anything about Thursday on the radio meeting.
Okay, see, that shouldn't have been last Thursday, but it doesn't. You still haven't done a walkthrough yet.
No, you would think they'd want to finish this because we're sitting on seven hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, I made it perfectly clear at that meeting that you're not gonna get it. You're not, yeah, you're not gonna get nothing until.
You tell us it's done, then, once they tell us it's done, we'll do our walkthrough.
Right.
But until they tell us it's done, there's no reason to do a walkthrough. Well, that's on our list.
So, when you were at the landfill, did you ask them if their rates were gonna change?
No, they came.
So, I'm budgeting the same?
Same.
Okay, I know we talked about it last week, but.
Yeah.
Any fa, anybody, union township clerk or trustee? We got those two spots and then Van Horn benefited fire trustee and a Monroe clerk. I've done nothing.
I have.
Nobody wants the job?
No. I'm not getting phone calls back, how's that stuff?
Okay.
What I wanted to do, I wanted to see if Paula Davidson will take over the secretary job.
Clerk.
And then I, clerk, excuse me, and then I find two council trustees, I figured I would have no problem doing that. The clerk problem I have, think problem finding somebody. So, I talked to her last two theory week or day, she was gonna talk to the former clerk and see what it all contends. She said, I'll call you right back, well.
He's, I know his health too, I don't know that he's gonna.
Yeah, so I don't know, I, she hasn't called me back yet. I don't want to bug her.
If we have to do, I mean, I can capable of doing that budget.
No, I'll, I'll, I'll get on.
Because I have all the finances in my office in the box.
Okay, I'll, I'll.
Okay, that way, I mean, if she, they're more than welcome to come in and look through it.
I was giving her a benefit of the doubt and, you know, it's been a week now, so it's long enough now, either yes, you want to do it or no, you don't. Let me start looking again, because I got a list of people that I made that I can call in that area. And, and that's what I was waiting for, I guess, you know, I was waiting for her to call me back, like you said, and that hasn't happened yet, so. So, we'll move to there, so. I'll get on that this week. I think we got a fairly quiet week for once.
Okay, I'm gonna log in here and I'll show you what our, what we were forced to.
Can we adjourn?
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Because I can, I can share screenshots too, just email.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
One second. All right, well, in favor.
All right?
All right?